I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, December 13th, 2022. Board members may attend and participate by electronic means in regular or special meetings of the board in accordance with policy BEAA and state law. Board members who attend and participate by electronic means shall identify the location from which they are participating and those present. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Garcia.
Here.
Gebhardt.
Here.
Miznick.
Here.
Raj Paul.
Here.
Sargent.
Here.
Sweeney Moran.
Here.
Ziss.
Here.
Thank you.
I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful civically engaged lives. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us electronically on BV222. We're glad to have you observe and participate in our meetings. At this time, I would accept a motion to approve the agenda. Hi Kitty.
Second.
Hi Beth. Laura, can you please call the motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Garcia.
Yes.
Gebhardt.
Yes.
Miznick.
Yes.
Raj Paul.
Yes.
Sargent.
Yes.
Sweeney Moran.
Yes.
Ziss.
Yes.
Motion passes.
So, at our meeting last in November, it feels like forever ago, we adopted a land acknowledgement and we're still trying to figure out how to weave that into our board meetings, but tonight what I'd like to do, we have a couple of special things. We have some BVEA representatives and authors who have a special presentation and I'd ask Richard if he could please read the land acknowledgement before we go any further.
Boulder Valley School District resides and operates on land that is the ancestral homeland and unjustly and illegally taken territory of the Ute, Puebloan, Arapaho, Cheyenne, Apache, Navajo, and 48 other tribal nations historically tied to this land, who have called this land home since time immemorial. We acknowledge the atrocities committed here, including the painful history of genocide, forced assimilation, and efforts to alienate the indigenous inhabitants from their homeland, supported by the policies of the United States government. BVSD is aware of the many indigenous people past and present and their dignified nations and cultures who care for the land with strength and resilience. BVSD recognizes the histories of the land in Colorado and the survival of the many nations that carry their oral traditions into the present. It is BVSD's responsibility to educate ourselves, our communities, and our students so that we can embrace the wisdom and knowledge of indigenous people and actively stand together to address injustices. In offering this land acknowledgement, we affirm and honor the history, wisdom, oral traditions, and resilience of indigenous people and recognize the responsibility to care for and appreciate this land together.
Thank you, Richard. As we move into the superintendent's report, we have some special guests and I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Anderson, to introduce our guests.
Thank you, Board President Gebhardt, members of the board. Tonight is the first board meeting in which we've been able to actually read our land acknowledgement. I'd like to bring BVEA President Patty Delgado and BVEA Vice President David Stewart up to the podium for a special presentation and recognition.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson, President Gebhardt, members of the board. We have a really special presentation for you today, so I'm going to turn it over to David.
Good evening, respected members of the school board and Dr. Anderson. On behalf of the Boulder Valley Education Association, I congratulate you all on the recent adoption of the land acknowledgement. BVEA is very proud that our members work in a school district whose leaders are sensible and sensitive about taking this kind of action on behalf of the community. I ask for your grace for my words, which I fear may never be quite right on the acknowledgement that our civilization stands on this land as a result of our lamentable history. The importance of the adoption cannot be overstated. First, it sends a message to our Native American students and community that indigenous cultures matter despite the horrendous treatment Native people have endured. In addition, it addresses head-on the veritable history of the expansion of the United States across the continent, a history fraught with hatred, duplicity, and unjustifiable bloodshed on the part of the people of the United States and its governments. As educators, we applaud you for calling us to be aware of the benefits many of us enjoy as a result of how history played out on this land. I stand here tonight in the presence of Margaret Cole. Margaret.
This is Margaret.
And her husband, George. Margaret is a writer and historian who is the author of many books, among which is her work Chief Left Hand. Left Hand, called Niwot in the Arapaho language, was an original resident of this area. In her book, Ms. Cole tells the story of Chief Niwot's experience among the first white settlers from the east, excuse me, among the first whites and gold miners. She details many cultural misunderstandings between Indians and the settlers from the east, which led to Chief Niwot ending up a victim in the Sand Creek massacre. He was victimized by soldiers in federal uniform while he was promised protection by that same federal government. To date, in my life of reading, this is one of the saddest books that I have ever read. Following along in her narrative, Margaret details just how the land we now live in was expropriated by white settlers by means of treaties with the democratically elected governments of the time, and these agreements were undone over the generations of subsequently elected US officials who proved to be unwilling to enforce the terms of the treaties made by their predecessors. And so, with this in mind, BVEA would like to present each of you a signed copy of Ms. Cole's book. If you haven't read it, we ask you to do so, and then we ask you to keep it as a part of your current office, with the intention to bequeath it to the person who next holds your position, with the intent that they will leave it to their own successor. In this way, we hope to ensure that BVSD's land acknowledgement will never be regarded or disregarded as some kind of outdated political statement, but rather as a statement forever informed by the historical record and protected as the righteous action of those who are willing to reflect on and learn from our past, no matter how sad or uncomfortable that might be. Thank you.
What a thoughtful, beautiful way to commemorate our land acknowledgement and to ensure that this board and boards that follow this board always know and understand the history and why our land acknowledgement is so important. So, thank you all so much. That was very thoughtful. Really appreciate that. Board members, for superintendent comments, I have two topics and then we'll have our student moment. The first topic is, the last time we met board members was election night, and so this is our first opportunity to thank our community formally for their support of our bond issue 5A, which will help us address BVSD's critical needs. Passed overwhelmingly, 69% in the city of Boulder, 67% overall, 61% in the city of Broomfield, which is so thankful to our voters for the confidence that they've placed in this school district and their support for the work that we're doing. We've already started to plan out the work for the bond projects, which are going to address crucial improvements in our schools, the replacement of New Vista High School, creation of a new school in Erie's Parkdale neighborhood, and improve facilities to support career and technical education in our Grad Plus framework. And so, I want to thank the community and just a moment of celebration for us as we move forward with this $350 million bond effort. The next topic I'd like to talk to the board and to our public about has to do with our state's accountability system. Board members, we've been talking about the state's accountability system, which would include the school and district performance frameworks for quite some time. It's embedded within our collective legislative priorities, specifically under education programming 3.1. BVSD supports limiting the amount of time devoted to state mandated testing to retain flexibility and utilize district-generated assessments, so the time that our students are required to test. And then specifically in 3.4, BVSD supports an accountability system that is flexible and reflects local priorities. This has been a concern for us for quite some time, and on Monday, a report was released as the result of legislation requiring an audit of our accountability system. A report was released by HUMRO, which is Human Resources Research Organization. And as a member of DASC, which is the Denver Area School Superintendent's Council, we have been contemplating what we think collectively as practitioners in the field of the largest school districts, the majority of the students in the state of Colorado, what we feel like the next iteration of accountability should look like here in Colorado. So, for those who don't know, our Denver Area School Superintendent's Council, or DASC, is composed of about 20 school districts throughout the Denver metro, and we strive to work together to make sure that we are advocating for the interests of each and every student in each and every one of our school districts. And while there are certainly differences in the districts that you could see on Slide 5, if you could back that up, Randy, we certainly have different political contexts, different priorities. We are all 100% in on kids and ensuring that we have an accountability system here in the state of Colorado that allows us to serve the needs of all students and communities. So, we've come together on a position statement. I will be sharing this with you all this evening. The superintendents from all those districts will be sharing this with their communities at their school board meetings as well in regards to what we would hope for, for a new accountability system. As I shared with you, this recent audit that was conducted by the Human Resource Resources Organization, the findings came out. I have the report highlights, board members, I could share with you. I know that those were made public. And some of the findings, I don't think are surprising to us. The evaluation was designed around, is the system doing what it was designed to do? And they felt through this analysis that there was a reasonable and appropriate basis for objectively measuring the performance of districts. But there's also troubling data that was found in this report that I know is in line with our community's values, our values as a governance team around things that we work each and every day to overcome. Within this, the report highlights, it states that this report found statistically significant differences in academic outcomes amongst some student groups, specifically schools with higher proportions of Hispanic or Black students, students with higher proportions of students receiving free reduced lunches, and students with higher proportions of students with disabilities, that those schools and those districts generally had lower academic achievement as measured by state assessments on mean scale scores and median growth percentiles on academic growth. Additionally, within this report, it shared that 50% of parents, responding parents, indicated that the statewide student assessment results were not helpful for understanding how their kids were doing. So, as reports come out from this audit, I think it's the hope of DASC and of myself, that it's a call to action for school boards, for school districts, for educators across our state to do better, because I think we can and we should. You know, we've crafted the following position statement, that we wholeheartedly support a redesigned accountability system led by practitioners, that accurately and comprehensively measures and advances student learning and progress, does not result in bias towards any student demographic, utilizes data that's timely and actionable, holds us all accountable to a high expectation to make sure that all students succeed. Our accountability system has to evolve. When we think about how education has to evolve, think about how many things that happen in K-12 public education as a result unintended consequences of an outdated accountability system. We think that a world-class accountability system holds everyone to high standards and expectations, allows comparability, and provides flexibility to support local control. When I think about the state of Colorado and how different the districts are and their needs are, and how this system is failing so many of our communities, to the extent that many of our rural colleagues have abandoned the system entirely, come up with their own system, you think about us here in Boulder Valley, where if we were to just go with the state accountability system, it would hide and mask so many of the issues we know exist in our community that our community wants us to work and fight for. You know, and as I talk about to educational practitioners across the state, we just definitely have the opportunity to get better. I think that accurate and timely assessment of performance, we need to make sure that that's important. You know, board members, as you know, and the public may or may not know, this is not the first state I've worked in. I've worked in other two large, very large states with accountability systems, and this is the only place I've worked where kids take a test and you don't get the results back until they started the very next year. So, if the goal of assessments and these rankies is to help us get better, and the kids have already started the school year, we've already set our budget, board members, we've already, you know, policies for the school year are where they need to be, our leaders are where they need to be, right? There's no time to make any significant changes. And so, that's not the case in other states. I just want to be clear, that in other states, the data, it's a priority to get the information in the hands of the educators so they can make decisions and be accountable to those decisions. I think that there's also concerns that, you know, when you have to test before spring break and you're testing for standards that are supposed to be taught over a year, what that does to the quality of the results and what that does to the rest of the school year in regards to making sure that that's meaningful and that we're assessing. So, you know, not that these are easy solutions to try to fix, but I think they're worthwhile and things that we need to consider. You know, we know that our accountability systems for all of us, not just districts and schools or our state, but our families, students, and communities, and we know that those are incredibly important. And what do we think a redesign collectively, all the superintendents around the Denver metro, what do we think that a redesigned accountability system keeps high expectations, helps to drive improvement, will allow us to better optimize instructional time, make sure that a full year measurements and student learning are prioritized? To really understand that all growth isn't equal and that the limitations of our current system, right, don't catch, catch-up growth is what I would call that. And so, if you're in third grade or you're in fourth grade and you're learning first, second, and third grade standards because of the pandemic or because of some other reason where you have gaps in learning, you know, that growth is different than if you're already on grade level showing up. And we think that there's different ways you can look at growth and capture growth below grade level and above grade level. If you come in above grade level and you stay at grade level and you're showing growth, we think that there's better ways to do that and to create, you know, certainly accountability and transparency. We think that there's opportunities to have stable measures. Our measures continue to move and shift and change, and I think that that's hard to really, that we need better stability, that we need to align with the Colorado essential skills and what is our employers, our workforce, the skills that they want our kids to have when they graduate. We should be measuring that. We want to make sure that there's multiple measures to assess growth and performance and that we want to make sure that efforts like Grad Plus and BVSD are recognized and honored and prioritized. And we want a system that's easy to understand. If 58% of parents can't read your system, it's time for a change. We propose first and foremost that number one, that there's a process that involves educators so we can rethink what accountability looks like in the state of Colorado. You know, there was a time where Colorado was considered a leader in this effort, and we're not considered a leader anymore. We want to return to that leadership role for our country. There's ways that you can use statistical analyses to align multiple different types of measures, across tests to give some more flexibility and choice in local communities. We want to measure different essential skills. We want to make sure that there's certainly post-secondary readiness that is prioritized, college, career, and workforce. And the districts have the opportunity, like we've done here in BVSD, to go out to our community, ask them what's important to them, and be accountable to that. Board members, as you'll remember, the reason that we have our strategic plan metrics dashboard was from a grant funded by the state, because at that point in time, they wanted districts to go out and think about how an accountability system in Colorado could evolve. We took that challenge. I think that we've created a level of transparency on accountability here in BVSD that is as stringent as any school district in the state of Colorado. And we would hope that those same folks who provided that grant and thought that that was important would begin to really help and join in this conversation on evolving the accountability system in the state of Colorado. And so, I appreciate the opportunity to present that on behalf of my fellow superintendents in the Denver Area School Superintendent's Council. I will say this, I'll end with this. We disagree on those things, and that as an organization, we, you know, we're passionate about education and we all fight and defend our communities, but we're united on this. And I would hope that the state of Colorado, the Colorado Department of Education, our legislators, our local delegation would take notice and know and understand that this is a conversation we should be having. We'll be looking forward to hopefully some legislation that gets run this session that would call for an evolved and better accountability system for our state, and just would really appreciate the opportunity to present that all to you all today. I'm happy to pause here and ask any questions, or we could do student moment and then questions, whatever the preference for the board would be. Student moment, then we'll go to questions. So, board members, this evening, I'm excited to welcome students and staff from Broomfield High School's Theater Department to talk about their efforts to ensure that every student has the opportunity to participate in the school's productions. And I will turn it over to our theater director from Broomfield. Hi.
Hello, my name is... Sorry, I'm usually very, very loud, so that's usually not a problem. So, let's talk about how the inclusivity at Broomfield creates moments for all students. So, without further ado, we have Xavier, Zoe, and Katie.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks. Yeah, thanks. Members of the board, Mr. Superintendent, my name is Xavier Mariotti, and I proudly represent Broomfield High School's theater program. When I think of moments from theater, there are lots that come to mind, but one that stands out for me is our last show, Puffs. During this show, I was given the opportunity to help out with Zoe. This was one of the great things about theater. We accept everyone. When I volunteered to help out, it was out of a sense that I could really help make, hey, I'm sorry, make a theater experience that she would never forget. Zoe's such a joy and brings a lot of energy. I'm sorry, looking down at this. And fun to theater. And to be her friend and partner during this show is something I will never forget. I got the opportunity to show what it really means to be a leader and a good friend. Yes, it can sometimes be hard to keep up with the energy Zoe brings, but in the end, it's worth it for me because Zoe truly embodies the spirit of theater, and to see her so happy makes me happy. Really, I cannot express how much fun I had during Puffs, helping Zoe, whether we were running all over the place, making sure we got on time for the next scene, or hanging out, waiting to come on. We were always having fun. Theater is a place, theater is a place for everyone and is truly a unique experience when it comes to stepping up and leading. Performing is just the face of it, and the friendships that are forged behind the scenes are just as prominent. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Zoe Choukane, and, um...
Remember your line. What are you supposed to say?
I won't say, "I had one, I had one at a time." Yeah. Thank you. Wow. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, I am Katie Kraft. I'm the vice president of our thespian board. I am on the tech side of theater, so I'm kind of behind the scenes, making sure people behind the scenes kind of get their moments. We work really hard on our theater to make sure everyone has a chance to do somewhat something, especially our students with disabilities. We put them in the spotlight, we give them things to do, and we make sure that they have a lot of fun and get their representation that they deserve.
And if you want to see more examples of student moments, SpongeBob SquarePants is our next musical, and Zoe will be in that show March 9th, 10th, and 11th.
Thank you all, and that is the end of superintendent's comments. Happy to answer any questions, board members.
Kitty?
I'm really happy to hear the work the superintendents are doing, because I brought this issue up with a member of the state board, you know, saying how the results of the tests that the kids take aren't available until, you know, months later, and so, you know, parents can't see how their kids are doing. And she said, "But that's not what it's for," that it's for grading school districts. I was a little disappointed with that.
Anyone else comment? Richard? Lisa?
Rob, thank you so much for that presentation and for that work. I wish our students hadn't left. I really wanted to just speak to them, but I'll say, share my comments anyway. I was a theater kid at Boulder High in the 90s, and I just think everything about the theater program generally has always been about inclusivity and kindness and community, and I really appreciate the presentation we had for them tonight. So, thank you to our student group from tonight, and thank you, Rob.
Richard?
It seemed like they were trying to get back in here, but I don't know whether she was successful. I too agree with you, Lisa. I think it's great to see that Principal Ramsey, you're doing a great job at Broomfield High School. I mean, what did you get tonight, like about four or five awards or something like that? Jeez. And then you come up with this theater group. It's wonderful. Thank you so much. As far as the audit is concerned, I guess one question that I would have is, I don't know who this audit company that did the audit is, and I don't probably care so much about it, but I wonder how many educators were involved in getting any kind of audit questions from this audit group? The reason I'm asking that is my wife, a teacher, a retired teacher of 28 years here in Boulder Valley School District, she left the profession after 28 years only because she was not getting the results that you were talking about that would help her and her students grow, and the results were coming in April or something like this, way too late, you know, for them to do anything in terms of helping their students grow. I bet you that audit would look a lot different if they would ask educators questions.
Yeah, you know, to the extent that the questions that the auditors were asked to answer don't fully, don't fully paint the picture that we're speaking about tonight, right, which is that the system has to evolve. You know, we're talking about the evolution of the design of the system, not as not it. And I think the way that the audit was conducted was, here's the system we designed, is it doing what it's designed to do? And I think, you know, my strong belief is that you have to redesign the system. And the truth of the matter is, other states are just leaps and bounds ahead of us, right? There are, you know, there are states that have created formative assessments versus summative assessments to give real-time information to teachers midstream, a pre-test, a mid-middle of the year, and the end of the year, so you can use that to drive instruction. There are states that have embedded multiple measures with some local controls that replace kind of the systems that you have. And I think that as we think, as I look at some of the most innovative districts in the state of Colorado, they've taken this out on their own, right? Whether it's SCAP...
Whether it's SCAP, which is some of our rural districts, which is just a beautiful, wonderful way to engage community on what matters, to the work that we've done alongside Canyon City and other districts that were part of our grant. I just think that it's time for us to come together and do better. And my worry is that folks will look at this audit and they'll say, "Well, it's doing what it was designed to do, and there's no need to make any changes." And to that point, Richard, I would say, go to a school district, go to a school, ask the educators, ask the parents, right? And I guarantee you'll find the results that this audit said, which is that folks think we can do better. And that's our ask. And so as we move forward, you'll be hearing that loud and clear from myself, from other superintendents, especially not just in the Denver metro. I think that you'll start to hear this resonate through superintendents throughout the entire state of Colorado. And if we don't know what this should look like, who does? I'm a lifetime educator, 26 years as a teacher, principal, assistant principal, three different states, accountability systems, have been able to achieve outcomes for kids everywhere I've been. And this system should evolve, and it should change, and we should demand it.
Nicole?
When we were at CASB, I happened to sit in on the accountability session, and one of the questions that I had asked, which maybe is timely considering what we're talking about right now, is how are we, what is the intent around using the information we glean from these local accountability grants in forming what might be the next version is desk, considering the work that's going on across the state with these local accountability grants and trying to roll that into something that they might propose more concretely?
I think that we were very careful in what we presented. We don't claim to have all the answers, and we think that there has to be some local control within these systems. Again, this idea that one size would fit all, that a system that would work for Boulder Valley, would work for Brush, would work for Cherry Creek, would work for Denver, would work on the Western Slope, Eastern Plains. I do think that there's some opportunity for some local flexibility. And I think that our hope is that educators and practitioners are at the table, right? That our new accountability system isn't cooked up in some think tank, right? With folks who don't work in schools or used to work in schools, right? I mean, think about how schools have changed just since the pandemic, right? Think about all of the results that we're seeing, all of the calls for education to shift and change, right? We're very familiar with the NAEP results, we're very familiar with the gaps and the progress that is perceived to be lost based on those results. And the idea that we just roll out the same old accountability system and think that somehow, some way that we would be getting better, we should evolve.
Couple of thoughts. I too wish I had the chance to comment on the students, but I'll comment anyway. What an incredible thing to see, what a great way to kick off our meeting tonight. My background's in special education, and I love the inclusivity. And I was not a theater kid, I think my daughter might be a theater kid, and I'm so excited about it. And to your presentation, Rob, thank you for sharing that tonight. A lot of my colleagues have already commented on many of my same thoughts, but a couple of things that resonated for me in the presentation, really, the word "evolve" came up a lot. I think you're right. You and I have both been other places and other states. We are lagging in Colorado regarding accountability. We can do better. We've seen better. Let's do it. I like that. I'm so excited that you and some of the other superintendents are taking this up and really pushing forward. And to Richard's point, I am very thrilled to hear that educators will be at the table and be involved in this, and it's not something that's designed by someone who's never even been in the classroom. So, wonderful. Thank you for taking that on.
Stacy?
Yeah, so I've long thought that the state does a really poor job in communicating on what the assessments are, what they're not. And so I just want to mention that so that going forward, you and your colleagues can maybe do a better job communicating to parents and to families and the community about what the assessments are, what the accountability is, and what they're not. I think it's been a missed opportunity for the state for many, many years.
So, I have a couple of things I'd like to add. David and Patty and the Coles, that was awesome, brought tears to my eyes, your statement, David. And I am looking forward, I think, to reading this book, although you'd said it was one of the most depressing books you'd read. But I love the idea of a legacy, of being able to pass this down and remind people of why we did this. So, I so appreciate the thoughtfulness. And if you'll pass on our gratitude to the authors, I'm sorry they couldn't stay, but that was really awesome. So, I really appreciate that. And Ginger, pass on our deep appreciation to the theater staff. Again, we're sorry they couldn't stay and hear our words of gratitude, but that was so exciting. You could just feel the enthusiasm and the excitement amongst everybody. So, maybe we can make it to SpongeBob SquarePants. So, thanks for that. So, Rob, I have a couple of questions, but I'm sure it won't surprise you because I've spent probably 10 or 15 years studying accountability systems. I was part of the, I actually started SCAP, and for those of you who don't know what SCAP is, it stands for Student-Centered Accountability Project, and you can Google it. And it's based on an inspectorate way of doing accountability. So, what that means, I'll be quick, is that means that a group of teachers will go into another district and will evaluate what's going on in that district, and then will write up a report, the superintendent will go. And so it's actually a hands-on, very informative, timely way of evaluating what's going on in a district. It's really expensive, so it's hard to do at a big district like Boulder, but the rurals have been making it work, and they've just pooled resources and found grants to make it work. And the State Board at the time was actually pretty agreeable, but the problem was with SCAP is they still had to do a parallel accountability system that the state required and that the feds require. So, I'm hoping there'll be some flexibility, but I don't know that the feds are going to be super flexible on the kind of testing that they're going to require for us to do an accountability. What I'm hoping is that we can have a conversation about mutual accountability. I'm tired of this unilateral accountability. Why can't we hold the state accountable for giving us the resources to be able to meet the standards that they want us to, that I think we all agree we want to meet, but I'm tired of not having that conversation about what's the role of the state in a mutual accountability system. So, I'm hoping that we can have a conversation about what that would look like and how we can hold the state accountable. Because it takes all of us to make the system work, and the state has taken a hands-off approach and making it all, "It's your fault, it's your fault, and we don't have any responsibility." Then I have one more thing to go on, Rob.
I'd say furthermore, and I don't know this to be certain, but it certainly feels like there are decisions that are made around these, based on limitations of staff or resources or the ability to just think differently from our State Department of Education. And we should think together on what a system looks like funded appropriately and embrace it. What you have today in many of our communities, and we've seen this, we've seen this in Adams 14, we've seen this in other places, that communities that have lost faith and trust in the system. So, do you keep pressing on? I think the time is now. We have new leadership on State Board of Education. We have an opportunity to have this conversation. We just want to be at the table. We don't have all the answers. Certainly, we need to be accountable. Certainly, a new system can shift and evolve. We have some strong opinions on what it should look like, but I think that there should be universal support around, we need to evolve and move forward. And anyone who suggests that we're okay with where we are, we should be pushing back on that as strongly as we can.
And I don't know if it falls under the accountability, but I would love to see a conversation about how we use test scores for teacher evaluations. I think we can have that conversation as part of this. I know it's a separate bill. I think it's under 191 or whatever the bill was 100 years ago brought by then-Senator Johnson, but I would hope that we could have that conversation as well as part of this because it keeps coming up and they keep dodging it at the legislature.
That would be wonderful. I would love to engage in that as well, one thing at a time. The accountability system.
It kind of fits under accountability. And then, kind of to your point, Nicole, the grant that we had, it took some persuading to get Canyon City to work with us because they were so far ahead of us on what they were doing in their accountability. They were kind of like, "Why would we talk with you guys?" But I think we could learn a lot from what some of our neighboring districts have done that have just have plowed ahead. So, I really look forward to seeing how this goes and wish you all the luck because I think we're going to find some feet in the mud as we kind of go forward. And I just have to say, what kind of report is it that says, this just made me laugh out loud, that to some extent, they use the material either to somewhat, either somewhat or to a great extent? I mean, we paid people to tell us that they use this either somewhat or to a great extent? I just don't know how much we paid for that. And then, Richard, this was driven by statute, so you can only imagine what the sausage-making looked like. So, I mean, I don't know that I hold the people who wrote it that accountable because they were kind of stuck, but we need to do better. So, thanks, Rob, for taking the lead on this. So, we will now lead to public participation. Members of the public who wish to speak at tonight's meeting were asked to sign up prior to noon today by submitting the request to speak during public participation form that can be found on the BVSD website, or by contacting the Board Secretary Laura Schaefer. Public participants have the option to attend the meeting in person or join and present their comments via Google Meet. The Board respects the rights of the public to speak on matters concerning the operation of the schools. The Board does not endorse the comments of any speaker and reminds all who speak that they are responsible for their own speech. This is a new part, so people should listen carefully. Please know this is a listening opportunity for the Board, and the Board does not engage in a dialogue or answer questions as part of public participation. The Board needs time to consider the comments made and may include items on future Board meeting agendas to address issues raised by the public in our community. To ensure that our meeting is conducted in an orderly manner, we ask that persons who address the Board, one, confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district; two, recognize that students often attend or view our meetings. Speakers' remarks therefore should be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. The Board President may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement that is unrelated to the business of the district or inappropriate for K-12 students. Limit your presentation to two minutes. If you run out of time or would like to share additional information, you may email the Board. You will see a yellow card when you have 30 seconds remaining. When you have 10 seconds, you will see an orange card. Please wrap up your comments. At the end of two minutes, a timer will sound and your microphone will be muted. Tonight, we will begin with those speakers who are addressing agenda items. And I believe our first speaker is Kathy Poller. Who is virtual?
It's virtual, yes. Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good. Thank you so much for your time tonight. Our understanding is that due to the proposal of the 65th Street access, the City Council has been renegotiating with the school board once again, and we've been making the final...
Kathy, they're really, we can't, it's very weak. Can you turn up the volume? Okay, can you, sorry, can you start again?
Yes. I'll just get closer. Our understanding is that due to the proposal of the 65th Street access, the City Council has been negotiating with the school board once again about the factory, and will be making the final annexation decision on Thursday. The partnership between BVSD, the City of Boulder, and Habitat for Humanity in order to build a modular housing factory is a complicated project. Although it seems like a worthy endeavor, it may soon prove to be a risky and expensive mistake. As elected officials, the school board has a responsibility to serve the entire student body and their families. The Construction Technology Program is one of 10 programs within Boulder Tech and offers an interesting array of skills in the certification program. However, in the grand scheme of things, and as the world becomes increasingly automated, how many students will truly desire to work in the factory? Both of our children attended Boulder Valley Schools from kindergarten until graduation. Our son was in special education the entire time and went on to front range to earn an associate's degree. We are big believers in alternative forms of education, and yet, a factory as an educational opportunity with a promising future seems far-fetched. In reality, it will be a City of Boulder agenda staffed by volunteers through Habitat for Humanity. The educational component of the project is a facade. The year of constructing the factory will severely impact the Boulder Tech campus with trucks and heavy machinery, and then a factory forever on school property by an educational nature preserve in a rare wetlands directly adjacent to a residential neighborhood. Is the school district prepared to manage this facility? As elected officials, how can you believe that this is the best use of this land? Is there a secret handshake between the school board and the Boulder City Council that excludes the citizens of Boulder? Let the city find a suitable location for this factory in an industrial zone. Interested students can travel to the factory if they choose. The student body as a whole will not benefit from this project. The Boulder Valley School District Board needs to step out of this partnership and listen to the citizens who voted them into office. A world-class accountability system would not support an expensive project that only serves...
Thank you very much. Kathy, we had a really hard time hearing you, so I'm hoping you can email us those comments as well. The volume was really low, so if you could email that to us, that would be really helpful.
Okay. Thank you so much.
And I'm hoping we can fix that by the time we have our next virtual speaker. Next, we have Claudia Martin-Williams.
Claudia is online, too.
Okay.
Yeah. Hi, can you hear me better than you could hear Kathy?
Not really.
No.
Can you hold on a second while we see if we can figure this out? Sorry.
I was actually able to hear Kathy very well.
Well, I'm glad you could, but we couldn't hear her very well. And there are people here who I think wanted to hear those comments as well, so just hold on a second while we see if we can get the volume figured out. Thanks for your patience.
Oh, no problem. She must be on there, and...
Yeah, no, I could hear it. Came in. And I can't hear, you know, so...
Maybe I can drive over there and show up. Test, test.
Claudia, we're now taking a two-second coffee break. I don't know if it's been fixed yet. I still see people running back and forth.
I could drive over in about five minutes.
I don't think you need to do that. Hopefully, we'll get this figured out. So, thanks again for your patience.
Yeah, I'm more than happy to wait until I get the volume fixed.
Totally, I'm there, yeah. It's weird.
Yeah, it's so funny that we can hear it.
I did that for 20 years.
It looked like they were popping my face. I'm sorry? I should sign up for the City Council run on the receiving room, just do it from work because it could be nine o'clock by the time.
Well, those go on.
Wow, that's loud.
Chris, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Claudia, can you say, "Testing, testing"?
Testing, testing, testing.
Thank you.
Chris, can you talk for a little bit longer so that we can compare?
Sure. Can you hear us?
Sure, I can.
You can.
All of the volumes seem to be perfectly fine on this device.
And how about the remaining members of the Board in the main room? Can they hear me now?
We're still having difficulties.
So, Claudia, we're going to do the in-person. While would they still try to figure out the volume piece with you, if you're okay? Sitting tight for another... Sitting tight for another couple of minutes, is that all right? Now I don't see you or hear you.
Yes, yes, there.
Okay. Can you hear us okay? Can you hear when the other people?
I can hear you guys great. Yeah, no, and I could hear Kathy fine as well.
Okay, good. So, what we'll do while we are still trying to figure it out, if it's all right with you, we'll go to the next speaker and then check back in with you. So, it'll be two minutes. How's that?
Okay, sounds great, thanks.
Okay. So, the next speaker, I believe, is in person, is Alex Cassidy.
You'll want to turn the microphone on.
Thank you. Can you hear me? All right, thank you. So, I'm here to talk about the 6500 Arapahoe annexation and the proposed factory. I live over here on Meadowlark Drive, and this factory is going to be a factory with a capital F. Big-time facility, lots of trucks, it's going to be a huge construction project. I really appreciate all your comments and conversation earlier about community involved, well, about accountability, kindness, and inclusivity. I know that you have a community involvement and decision-making statement that's up on your website. I've seen that. So, I have to tell you that this approach that we've seen to this factory, from our point of view, hasn't felt too kind. There's been no community involvement in the decision-making process. There's been no, the project, excuse me, sorry. There are some pieces of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan that were not really incorporated into the development of it. That includes incorporating ecological systems into planning, including native ecosystems, maintain and restore natural ecological processes, wetland and riparian protection. You have not conducted a traffic study on the campus. There's no noise assessment report for this project. There's no environmental impact assessment for this report. There's no good neighbor agreement, and so I guess my call to action for all of you is to put the brakes on this project until you can take the time to get it right. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura, have we fixed the volume? It is what we have.
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Let's try again, okay? Claudia, let's try again.
All right. Check, 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 can you hear me?
We can hear you a little bit, but I would ask, I ask the same thing of Kathy, is that after you're done, if you could email us your comments? I think that would be great. And so, we'll figure out a way to make those public to the emailed comments, but...
I'm perfectly happy to drive over, I can be there in five minutes.
No, it's fine, go ahead. We can, we can kind of hear you, and I think we're doing a workaround here, so go ahead.
All right, well, thank you for your time, and thank you for trying to fix the sound. My name is Claudia Williams. My husband and I live in Boulder, Colorado, raise our kids here, they attended their neighborhood schools, K through 12. I'm speaking today to implore BVSD to reconsider the behind-the-closed-door agreement with the City of Boulder to annex public property to build a factory which would abut a sensitive environmental area, Sombrero Marsh, and a long-established residential neighborhood. I find it disturbing that OSMP Board was not aware of these plans until informed by a community member at the 9th November 2022 meeting of OSMP. One OSMP Board member, Dave Kunst, stated, quote, "This feels like a requiem for Sombrero", end quote. A death knell for a pocket of habitat in alkaline wetlands deemed, quote, "rare for this region," unquote, by OSMP on their website. BVSD is correct in its opposition to factory access via 56th Street. However, changing access to 63rd Street then foists the problem onto the doorstep of Columbine Mobile Home Residents who are economically and racially underrepresented in Boulder. This gets to the core problem. This location is not suitable for a manufacturing factory, no matter how well-intentioned the stated goal of making affordable housing units is. In closing, for the remainder of my two minutes, I request we observe a moment of silence in respect for the loss of peace and quiet for the community of Columbine and the death
Thank you. Next, we have William Platso, again, I believe is remote.
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you fine.
Great. Okay, I really appreciate you reading the land use agreement you did last month as part of the...
You just started fading, can you?
Can you hear me now?
Kind of, just stay close to your microphone if you can.
Yeah, I'm close to my microphone, it's on maximum.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Kind of like we could hear before. Again, I'll ask that you email your comments and just keep going. We can make out, I would say, probably 90% of what you're saying, so.
Okay, I will speak loudly. I wanted to thank you for reading the land use agreement you did at the last meeting about the Native American Heritage Month, and I wanted to read you excerpts of the response to that from Don Keelin, Chairman of the Rocky Mountain Indian Chamber of Commerce. You've been sent this, but I wanted to read excerpts because I think it's very relevant. He said, "This statement sounds heartfelt. However, at the same time those words are being spoken, BVSD and the City of Boulder are working to change our sacred land from being designated as public use to industrial and building a huge 31,000-square-foot factory that will produce up to 100 modular homes per year. A factory of this size would create noise, fumes, and runoff that would desecrate not only the land it is built on, but the pristine open space in extremely saltwater Sombrero Marsh, which are directly adjacent to the factory. Yet again, the white man is promising one thing while doing just the opposite. We've been lied to so many times, this is just one more example. Actions do speak a lot louder than words." He goes on to say, "We would take great offense at the destruction of this historically significant, pristine Native American land. Because it is a unique saltwater marsh, it was a gathering place for animals, especially buffalo, and the Native Americans who relied on both the salt and the animals for survival. It's over 20,000 years old and was a focus point for many generations and numerous tribes." He says, "This is unacceptable, and we will not forget those who continue to desecrate our most cherished lands and make promises that were never meant to be kept. There are many places that would be much more appropriate for this." I'm thinking, the Belmont Power Plant is only a couple blocks away. The land, it's closed, the land is not being used, it's zoned for industrial. Please consider other locations. Thank you.
And just so you know, all of a sudden, everything came loud and clear, so whatever's happening back there, thank you. Next, we have Joseph Prizio, who's been given two minutes, from, I think, Cindy Warren.
Okay, I think that's right. Okay, hello, I'm also here to speak about the modular home factory proposed to be built here on this campus. Public comments made during the 1117 City Council meeting pointed out the risks and disruption to the Columbine Mobile Home Park and to the Sombrero Marsh regulatory wetlands from the factory, truck traffic along 63rd Street, the then-sold route to and from the factory, and due to those public comments, the City Council postponed approving the IGA pending its modification to address the traffic concerns. You have before you tonight the amended IGA. It contains Item H, which concerns factory deliveries, and it reads, and I'll paraphrase, "The parties will ensure that deliveries to and from the factory will only occur on 65th Street during times when traffic impacts on district operations and related risk for students, employees, parents, and other members of the public using 65th Street are low. Deliveries to and from the factory via 63rd Street will be minimized to the greatest extent possible." So, Item H has many deficiencies. Here are the most salient ones. Without objective criteria as to what constitute low impacts on school operations and safety, Item H is meaningless, and I think you recognize that, and probably it's meaningless for deliberate reason. Item H offers no guidance based on historic traffic patterns about the duration and times when the traffic impacts might be low are the opposite. Item H must state clearly that the provision applies to factory truck traffic both to and from the facility, both during construction and during later operations. It only refers to deliveries. So, a front-end loader or a bulldozer coming to the factory site, would that be a delivery? Probably not. Item H offers no counterbalancing judgment for protecting the safety of Columbine residents and for avoiding adverse impacts to their environment. Every reduction in construction and operational impacts on district property increases the adverse impact on Columbine residents in the Sombrero Marsh wetlands. The parties appear to be entering the agreement from a state of ignorance about construction traffic impacts, which neither the city nor the district appear to have described in any public document. The city and the district knew, or they should have known, that social equity and environmental issues were at stake if construction and operation of truck traffic traveled along 63rd Street. The traffic dilemma, this traffic dilemma is wholly of city and district making. For the parties with apparent indifference failed to consider or they outright disregarded the significant traffic impacts on the Columbine residents and the Sombrero Marsh. I'm asking that, as a minimum, you send the amended IGA back to staff for further amendment. The factory will operate Tuesdays through Saturdays and during weeks-long school vacation, in other words, in ways that do not necessarily align with a school schedule. Would a school district near Las Vegas that offers a vocational program in tourism or hospitality industry be justified in using its supremacy status to overrule zoning to construct a hotel or a casino in which students might receive some related training? What is the tipping point at which proper school function becomes improper and injurious to the public? I would like to point out that in public documents, this facility is referred to as a modular affordable home factory, as a modular home factory, as a manufacturing facility, as a modular factory. Nowhere is it referred to as a VOTAC facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mark Young.
Members of the Boulder Valley School Board, my name is Mark Young, and I have lived at 1184 Westview in originally Hills for the past 10 years. I come before you tonight with one request. Please remove Item 79, Approval of the Intergovernmental Agreement, or IGA, from the consent grouping, and have a separate, open discussion about some of the terms in the proposed agreement, specifically as they relate to traffic during the actual construction phase of the proposed modular home factory. Please consider the following. Per the Martin &amp; Martin Engineers' opinion dated April 17, 2020, which is the last one that we've seen, there will be 20,000 cubic yards of field dirt brought in for the project. Based on an estimate of 13 cubic yards per dump truck load, that's 1,500 truckloads in and 1,500 empty trucks out of the site. Per the same opinion, there will be 73,000 square feet of existing asphalt demolished and removed. Based on an estimate of 12 cubic yards per truckload, that's an additional 108 trucks in and out of the site. Added together, this is over 1,600 dump trucks in and out of the site during the initial phases of construction. That's 3,200 trucks that have to come in and out either on 65th or 63rd Street over the course of a few weeks or months. At the November 17 Boulder City Council meeting, a BVSD representative said that BVSD was opposed to any traffic for the factory on 65th Street. The City Council unanimously opposed traffic on 63rd due to potential negative impact on the Columbine Mobile Home Park residents and the Sombrero Marsh. Councilman Yates suggested that BVSD and City Council staff come up with a compromise. While the compromise under 2B12H of the IGA could work for the minimal traffic anticipated once the factory is in operation, it doesn't account for the massive volume of truck traffic during construction. I would suggest an open discussion on this topic before approving. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Chuck Hardisty, virtually.
Hello, can you hear me?
Can hear you, great.
Thank you very much. Hello, we hope you will take the Habitat Factory out of the consent agenda and have a real discussion. After reading the latest City Council packet regarding the factory IGA, it seems that things have gone from bad to worse. The info in the packet does not include the still-missing good neighbor policy that has been discussed. It says, "Language was removed that requires all deliveries to the factory to occur during operating hours. Given that BVSD already has said they have too much traffic, moving some deliveries to off-hours means that after hearing noise all day, we can't even sleep until 7:00 a.m. or have a peaceful dinner." All of the language in Section H in the IGA talks about deliveries to the factory and still does not address the way more than 1,000 large trucks required for the construction of the factory next year. These trucks will not be able to turn off their backup beeps. Contractors will want a parade of trucks during the day whenever they need them, not a few trucks restricted to slack time for BVSD. The noise, dirt, and traffic from the construction will not just affect the Columbine Homes, Marsh, Nature Center, and local neighborhoods, it will also have a major impact on the schools right next to the factory, where you are right now, for the construction year and continued impact forever. Given all the bad aspects associated with this factory site, it's time to stop it or at least put it on hold and have a serious investigation in other locations. Think about how you would like to have a factory built in a public zone next to your home or your children's school. It seems like the area north of Estacio Field should be considered. This is not near a neighborhood or marsh and doesn't have the traffic issues of BVSD, but still only a mile from BVSD and close to parking. I also wonder about some of the old western disposal space. It's closer to water, but we not need all the fill. Thank you for your time and consideration of our concerns. Please stop this.
Thank you. Next, we have Mohan Amasa.
Mr. Anderson, honorable guests and Board of Directors, it's my honor to be here to present my concern about the project here, the modular home factory. My name is Mohan, I live on Meadowlark. Just adjacent to the factory-proposed location. I'm fully supportive of the great idea of helping the homeless or affordable homes. Everybody should be supportive, and spending millions of dollars or tens of millions of dollars for this project is a great idea. But this location is where I have biggest concerns. This is an educational zone area, and we're setting up a factory that, as my friends' neighbors expressed, you're looking at thousands of trucks and massive workload and very noisy environment and affecting life, quality of life to the neighbors, as well as to the environment and the wet life there. This is, in a way, it's becoming a commerce city. So, I hope not to see and live in a place like Commerce City and with this kind of noisy and disruptive place. It's also morally unjust. My, it's also a moral and justifiable project if you look at the location. There's so many other places available, and we're setting up such a massive factory here. And you're all public servants, and I'm hopeful that as much as you care about either homeless or people who need homes, to as the people who live here and been living here for tens of years and invested in the properties as well as the environment and open space here, I'm kindly requesting you to look at other options. There are so many other open spaces. And our scale-back to make it, as you promised, to be a regular educational center with a few smaller capacity. Thank you very much for listening to my concerns and looking to hear some changes. Thank you.
Thank you. So Laura, I have a question. Is this a separate person?
I think they're duplicates.
Okay. I have two Claudia Williams, that's why I'm asking. And next we have Tina Fields.
Is it working? Okay. Yes, my name's Tina Fields, and I'm also here speaking against the modular project. I really appreciate your adoption of the land acknowledgement offered at the beginning of this meeting. I live here. For five years before I lived here, I lived in a trailer park, and I really understand the need for creating more inexpensive housing. But I have really strong feelings of no confidence about this particular project. You heard why. A lot of our people have spoken to it already. It's principles that are based in the land acknowledgement. I'm here pleading for you to walk your talk. My first thing is to say, you know, it's not a good idea to push forward an agenda when so many stakeholders have really strong concerns about it, like those that have been spoken here. And so, my first big ask is to remove this item from the consent agenda. Let's have further talk about it. Make us proud of our elected officials. Make this a collective action. That's the vital act now. And after that, here's how to regain our trust. Please conduct environmental impact studies before allowing any further movement on this project. The new lighting, noise, vibrations, particulate matter, traffic, and factory fumes will adversely affect everybody who lives here, including the wildlife at Sombrero Marsh. Please conduct a traffic study before allowing any further movement on the project. You know, as usual, progress seems to be on the backs of lower-income folks, the very demographic that this factory purports to benefit. Honor the Boulder County Planning Department's recommendations of September 9, 2021. Agree to negotiate a good neighbor agreement. If it has to go through access to the facility, it should come straight through 65th. And so, in summary, since many of Boulder's development principles have been bypassed or ignored, I strongly request this project be suspended until a fully open and transparent review process can be executed. And honestly, ideally, you heard it, it should be cited in an area already zoned industrial, not here. I'm a theater kid and a professor. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. We'll now move on to non-agenda items. Our first speaker is Tiffany Gengelebach. Sorry for butchering your last name.
It's okay. Everybody does. Thank you, board members, for truly caring for our kids. Across the nation, we're seeing a lot of school boards who care more about culture wars than about children. And I just really appreciate that you all care so deeply about our youngest community members. My name is Tiffany Gengelebach. I've been leading a group of 200 parents who are concerned about lunch in our elementary schools. BVSD is a state and national leader on many fronts, but in particular, school lunch food. We have a nationally-recognized menu and a lunch program headed by brilliant and caring people. But our lunch program does have one serious flaw. Our children don't have time to eat the beautiful, locally-sourced, healthy, delicious food that is served to them. Parents have been complaining about this for years, and nothing has been done. When the board approved the equal school day for elementary schools, no consideration was given to adequate lunch periods. Most of our elementary schools allow 20 minutes total for children to have a lunch break, and I come to you with a petition signed by more than 1,000 community members, asking you to right this wrong. Research tells us that children need at least 20 minutes of seated eating time. Lunch should be a break from school, just as adults need a lunch break from work. They should be allowed to socialize and eat at a reasonable pace. Federal law defines a meal period for an employee as ordinarily 30 minutes or more. Our children deserve at least this. Some of our children are unable to finish their meals in the short time given to them, which is especially detrimental for children whose only guaranteed meal of the day is provided at school. These children often miss their fruits and vegetables, which research shows they save until last. Also of concern, however, are the kids who are being trained to wolf their food down as quickly as possible so that they can't learn to listen to their bodies. Many children in our current system finish with time to spare because they've adapted to these unreasonably short lunch periods. I've been timing my own children during their lunch periods since the beginning of October, and I have timed them having only 8 to 13 minutes to sit and eat during their 20-minute lunch breaks. The rest of the time is devoted to standing in line and cleaning up their tables. If any child is still trying to eat, none of the children can go to recess, so of course, the children are shamed into throwing away wanted food. Other schools allow kids to go to recess whenever they want, which results in children skipping lunch altogether because they would rather play, which naturally has consequences that a child doesn't anticipate for later in the day. Hungry children can't learn. The biggest obstacles I hear about from schools are the impact to the required minutes for teaching during the day and space considerations. But there are ways to address these issues. First, with regard to space, most cafeterias in our elementary schools can fit more children than they do. If we fit more children into the lunch spaces at a time, we can provide them a longer lunch without dramatically extending the amount of time the cafeteria is open. For example, kindergarten could start lunch at 11. First grade could start at 11:15. Kindergarten could vacate at 11:30, 1st grade comes in, et cetera. There are a few schools where this may not work, and we might have to get creative, but we know that they can because they did during COVID. The children had to be seated with a lot of extra space between them, and those schools made it work. With children seated a normal distance from each other, the creative solutions schools came up with in COVID could be extended now to give the children adequate time to eat. As to the second concern about learning time, if we can seat more children at a time in the schools for lunch, and teachers truly cannot come up with 10 more minutes during the day, then, we only need an extra 10 minutes added to the day in order to avoid taking any time at all from curriculum. We can release the children at 3:00 instead of 2:50. That is not a disaster. It's wrong to consider lunch wasted learning time. Lunch is a necessary part of learning body awareness and social skills. To quote our own Chef Anne, "At the end of the day, we need to value what, where, and when our children eat as much as any other learning experience that happens during the school day." Some may believe that reading, writing, and arithmetic far outweigh school lunch in import. However, the only one of these things that a person will do numerous times a day for their entire lives is eating. Just because our kids can adapt to short lunches doesn't mean that they should have to. It's a bad sign that so many of them are able to finish eating lunch in 5 to 10 minutes by 3rd grade. Just because adults have messed up, our children should not have to suffer. I ask the board to lead the way for surrounding school districts on this issue and mandate 30 minutes for elementary school lunch. Thank you for your kind attention, and I look forward to working with you to find solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. I forgot to add that you were given two minutes additional. No, you did fine. I just, the rest of people are probably wondering why you let it go for four minutes, so that's all. So, thank you very much. Next we have Jane Reagan, who's been given two minutes by Jake Reagan.
Good evening. My name is Jane Reagan. I've lived in Boulder for 25 years. I have four children who have been through the Boulder Valley School District, Crestview Elementary School, Centennial Middle School, and Boulder High School. In my profession, I am a registered dietitian-nutritionist, and I have had it private practice for 13 years, counseling children, adolescents, and adults on the value of nutrition for better physical, mental, and emotional health. When my children were in middle school, I spent eight years volunteering in their lunchroom. I was also the nutrition educator for five years for the Grow Foundation, where I helped teach nutrition to elementary school kids in BVSD and set up gardens in a variety of elementary schools. I'm here today to talk to you about the need for longer seated lunchtimes. I witnessed this problem for many years that I volunteered, and I am still told today in my private practice that kids repeatedly have no more than 10 minutes for their lunchtime. The CDC recommends at least 20 minutes of seated lunchtime for children to finish their lunches, and less than 50% of the US school districts follow these recommendations. Healthy school meals are one of the primary tools used to combat childhood hunger, while also improving a child's health, behavior, and academic performance. Because the school lunch provides 1/3 of a student's daily nutrients, I believe it is important for all of you, as members of the school board, to understand that seated lunchtimes affect not only food consumption, but also nutrient consumption. It is not only the food that matters, but the time that matters. Research shows that providing less than 20 minutes of eating time for students contributes to students' suboptimal intake of fiber, fruits, vegetables, calcium, vitamin C, vitamin A, and overall calories. Consuming adequate nutrients and calories becomes even more important when these options are not available in a student's home environment. And in addition, short eating periods have further ramifications for those children who eat school lunch due to having to wait in long lunch lines. It is clear that the community cares about our children's nutrition. Recently, voters in Boulder County approved a measure that now funds free lunch for all kids K through 12. The Chef Anne program has spent years revolutionizing school food in BVSD by providing daily homemade nutritious, well-balanced meals. I believe Boulder is a leader in the nation in providing access both financially and nutritionally. However, if we don't give our kids the time they need to eat their lunch, they can't take advantage of the nutrition benefits and all the hard work that has been done to feed our children. Eating behaviors are set early in life. As a nutritionist, I believe it is our responsibility to do all that we can to provide our kids with good eating habits, including appropriate eating time. To optimize students' consumption of school meals and ensure that students have at least 20 minutes of seated lunchtime outside of travel time to the cafeteria and waiting in lunchlines, I am asking that the school administrators and school board members develop scheduling strategies that provide a guaranteed full 20 minutes of seated eating time in all BVSD schools. Our children deserve this protection so that they can be guaranteed at least one meal a day in an environment that allows them the nutrition their bodies need for optimal learning and growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Mary Pierce.
My name is Mary Pierce, and I'm here with Ann Lund. We are both parent volunteers representing after-prom for Boulder Valley School Districts. Not everybody knows about after-prom. It was on hiatus for three years, so we're here to create awareness and the knowledge that we're trying desperately to bring back this very important event. The Fairview High School/Boulder High School After Prom Organization is composed of Fairview and Boulder High parent volunteers, 100%. We're excited to host the After Prom this year at the East Boulder Community Center on April 29, from 11:30 PM to 3:30 AM. After Prom 23 will bring together over 1,500 students from both high schools. We believe our community has the responsibility to carry on this important event. A little history, After Prom was created by concerned parents and administrators after a series of tragic accidents in the 1990s. After a three-year hiatus, it was carried on for over 26 years. After the three-year COVID hiatus and with the tragic accident of prom night in 2022, our goal is to reinstate After Prom this year and to keep it going in the future. After Prom is more than a party. It brings together students from both high schools. It's the only event that brings together students from both Fairview and Boulder High School. It's an epic, memorable event of fun. It provides food, music, activities, prizes, and more importantly, this year, a safe ride home. We want to provide a secure place for our students to go and socialize, especially on prom night. We're here really to create awareness and to let you know that we're seeking community support and sponsorship for this event. On average, this event will cost over $60,000 with adding transportation and free ride home. And we need our community to come out and support the cost of this event. A few sobering statistics. They show that prom night is the deadliest night of the year for teens due to alcohol-related car accidents. If that's not sobering enough, 90% of teens believe their peers are likely to drink and drive on prom night. 54% of students have four-plus drinks on prom night, and 5,000 people under the age of 21 die each year from underage drinking. Please come support our event. Please send all the information you have to your contacts in local communities. Thanks for allowing us to come.
Thank you very much. Next we have Ross Weiner, who's been given two minutes by Renee Delgaudio. And they're virtual.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you great.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Anderson and board members. I spoke to you in August, and I want to speak again about the need for an advisory program in BVSD middle and high schools. You know, it breaks my heart to say that we've had three suicides at Boulder High School this year. We've also had a few near misses around students bringing guns in or near our schools. Our students, there are students who are slipping between the cracks right now, and we have no way of knowing this, of knowing whether each child has a trusted adult relationship in our schools. An advisory program can fix this. I'm a longtime parent at BVSD schools with a student at Boulder High School. Over the last 25 years, I have worked as a classroom teacher and founder of an educational organization that partners with schools to reimagine learning. Advisory is a regularly scheduled time when a teacher meets with the same students to focus on social and emotional learning. There are no grades. Studies have shown that advisory improves learning, reduces behavioral issues, and increases trust and belonging. The University of Chicago's longitudinal study of relational trust in a dozen Chicago schools found that gains in trust, which is a byproduct of advisory, led to gains in learning. In contrast, schools with weak trust saw no improvement in reading or math scores. I applaud the Wellness Center at Monarch and the onsite crisis counseling at Boulder High School, but these services are opt-in, and most students don't. We need to create a program that touches all students and is part of what our families consider real school. In schools around the nation, advisory is the norm and not the exception. Denver Public Schools, like many districts, launched an advisory program during the pandemic, and it is now made it mandatory moving forward. I work with Valor Collegiate Academies, a charter network in Nashville, Tennessee, that has a nationally-recognized advisory called Compass. Valor's two middle and one high schools were started less than six years ago. They run out of converted big-box stores and don't even have a playing field. They are highly diverse, where more than 60% of students qualify for free and reduced lunch. Yet, these schools consistently rank in the top 1% of both growth and achievement for all schools in Tennessee. Valor's students in low-income families outperform all other student demographics in Tennessee. Valor has flipped the achievement gap, and I believe that BVSD could do the same. There is no doubt that BVSD will one day have an advisory program. If you look at what's happening around the nation, BVSD, in fact, used to have an advisory program in its middle schools in the 90s, which was closed down because of a greater emphasis on learning targets and assessments. But there's no competition between learning and social and emotional learning. They support each other. So, what are the roadblocks? First, there is the contract between BVSD and the teachers' union that prevents another teacher prep. But Centaurus has found a creative way around this problem by funding grade-level advisors to create lesson plans. Second, there is funding. I know teachers are maxed out right now, and I'm not suggesting adding more to their plates. This will require funding. But here's the good news. But here's the good news. We have the goodwill and agreement around advisory in both BVSD and BVEA leaders, according to conversations I have had. We have the time in our high school schedule. We have the ideas and talent. Centaurus and Nirvista already have advisory programs, and we have a strong start with the Career Readiness Academy, which I am involved with, and this year is running in three BVSD high schools. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. We only need to bring together the ideas and talent we already have. I propose we start small in this coming year with a funded pilot, which would bring together a team of teachers to do site visits, optional sessions during advisory blocks, and collect data and feedback. And I'm going to launch an online parent petition to call you to do this, and I'll be back in January. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have John Nesleg.
Thank you, President Gephardt, members of the board, Superintendent Anderson. My name's John Neslich. I'm a parent of a sophomore at Boulder High School and an eighth grader at Centennial Middle School, and I've come this evening to speak with you about two things in particular. First, safe routes to schools, and second, the policies which govern our board as it exists now. With regard to safe routes to schools, it's imperative that our children be enabled to travel to and from school without fear of encountering any harm or threat. This isn't the case currently with my neighborhood schools. With regard to Centennial Middle School, for which there is no bus service provided given our neighborhood, there was an encampment along Four Mile Creek near the underpass at 28th Street. This encampment was reported, and it was eventually cleared away after three days. I am fortunate that my wife is able to take my children to and from school, and I understand that more and more people are doing so. Fewer kids ride bikes to school for fear of situations they may encounter or fears that their parents reasonably hold. It's an entirely different ballgame when we think about Boulder High School and the known issues which surround it. It's incontestable, you know, that any route you take from my neighborhood to Boulder High School, you will encounter underpasses at which people may be either camping or loitering. It's unclear perhaps what they're up to. They might be chemically altered or mentally disturbed. It's not an environment that we would want our children to pass through unaccompanied. Most of us are busy working and caring for families, caring for elderly, doing a great many other things, don't have the opportunity to personally escort our children to and from school. If you're lucky enough, you can drive them there, or maybe they can ride a bus, but where there isn't a bus provided, that's not an option. And for those students who engage in activities after school, whether they be sports, theater, work, whatever, they don't have a choice. They're either going to ride a public bus, at which point they're at risk of encountering people which could bring them harm, psychological or physical or both. And the solution is multifaceted, and it's very complex. But the issue here, as I see it, is acknowledge that there are known issues, right, that the children can encounter, and ask what can be done about that. One of the main things that can be done is to partner with our local law enforcement. You are already doing so with your safe routes to school, but these only address traffic issues. These don't address issues in which people could encounter bodily harm or psychological harm. I've met with the community service officer Mitch Trujillo, and I know that there are other parents with whom I've been meeting with, with safe routes to schools, have met with one of the district representatives for that program. It would be optimal to include these type of known risks along the safe routes to school so that families can make informed decisions about how they get their children to and from school. In my case, I had my student, as a 14-year-old freshman, made an ill-informed decision, and that's on me, I guess. Shame on me. She chose to walk from the campus, open campus, and go and study at the downtown library during a school day, 1:30 in the afternoon. She was targeted and victimized by a predator inside the library. This is not something that I wish upon any other family, any other student, and I ask that you work in partnership with the schools and with law enforcement to... Did I get all four minutes? Sorry. Yeah? Okay. Thank you very much for your time and consideration. I'll sign up again for the next meeting. Thank you.
And I apologize, John. You were given two minutes by Jennifer Rhodes, so yeah, you got the four minutes. And as we've said, if you want to email the rest of your comments to the board, that would be great, too. So I understand we have Kathy Powler back on, who can... Now we can hear her.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Well, I didn't have time to rewrite it, so I'm going to go again. Thank you so much. You ready?
Yep.
Our understanding is that due to the proposal of the 65th Street access, the City Council has been renegotiating with the school board once again and will be making the final annexation decision on Thursday. The partnership between BVSD, the City of Boulder, and Habitat for Humanity in order to build a modular housing factory is a complicated project. Although it seems like a worthy endeavor, it may soon prove to be a risky and expensive mistake. As elected officials, the school board has a responsibility to serve the entire student body and their families. The Construction Technology Program is one of 10 programs within Boulder Tech and offers an interesting array of skills in the certification program. However, in the grand scheme of things, and as the world becomes increasingly automated, how many students will truly desire to work in the factory? Both of our children attended Boulder Valley Schools from kindergarten until graduation. In fact, our son was in special education the entire time and went on to front range to earn an associate's degree. We are big believers in alternative forms of education, and yet a factory as an educational opportunity with a promising future seems far-fetched. In reality, it will be a City of Boulder agenda staffed by volunteers through Habitat for Humanity. The educational component of the project is a facade. The year of constructing the factory will severely impact the Boulder Tech campus with trucks and heavy machinery, and then a factory forever on school property by an educational nature preserve in a rare wetlands directly adjacent to a residential neighborhood? Is the school district prepared to manage this facility? As elected officials, how can you believe that this is the best use of this land? Is there a secret handshake between the school board and the Boulder City Council that excludes the citizens of Boulder? Let the city find a suitable location for this factory in an industrial zone. Interested students can travel to the factory if they choose. The student body as a whole will not benefit from this project. The Boulder Valley School District Board needs to step out of this partnership and listen to the citizens who voted them into office. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, and I believe we have Claudia Martin-Williams back.
Hello again. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you for allowing Kathy and I both back. As I said before, my name's Claudia Williams. My husband and I live in Boulder, Colorado, very close to the Boulder Valley School District. We raised both our kids here. They went to the neighborhood schools through K through 12. I'm speaking tonight to implore Boulder Valley School District Board to reconsider the behind closed-door agreement with the City of Boulder to annex public property to build a factory, which would abut a sensitive environmental area, the Sombrero Marsh, and a long-established residential neighborhood. I find it really disturbing that the Open Space Board was not aware of these plans until informed by a community member at their ninth November 2022 meeting. One board member, Dave Koontz, stated that, quote, "This feels like a requiem for Sombrero," end quote. A death knell for a pocket of habitat in alkaline wetlands deemed, quote, "rare for this region," end quote, by the Open Space Mountain Parks on their website. Boulder Valley School District Board is correct in its opposition to factory access via 65th Street due to the traffic, safety, and noise concerns. However, changing access to 63rd does not solve the problem. It just foists the problem onto the doorstep, literally, of the Columbine mobile home residents who are economically and racially underrepresented in Boulder. This gets to the core problem. This location is not suitable for a manufacturing factory, no matter how well-intentioned the stated goal of making affordable housing units is. In closing, for the remainder of my two minutes, I request we observe a moment of silence in respect for the loss of peace and quiet for the community of Columbine and the death of Sombrero Marsh. Thank you for your time.
Laura, I believe that concludes our public participation for the evening.
That is correct.
All right. Just to check in with the board, do you want to do board communication and then maybe take a break or see how we're doing after board communication? Is that a break now, Richard? Break now. I'd like to call this meeting back to order, and I think the next spot on the agenda is for board communication. Who wants to go first? I didn't tell any of you this, but if any of you would be willing to share what you learned at the Casby Convention, I think that would be awesome, even just like one little glimmer. But if you don't have anything to share, that's fine, too, because I didn't give you a heads up. So I'll start with you, Nicole. Nicole, you've reminded me of this, so.
Thanks, Kathy. Yes, we had the pleasure of attending the Casby Convention this year, which is my second year there, and this year I really did enjoy the breakout sessions more than I had last year. Our Breakfast of Youth Equity Council is always a highlight, and I enjoy engaging with our student leaders. And a couple of the things that I attended, one was around a meeting, a breakout session on board communication, where a board, draw-and-go boards, shared some of their practices that I think some might be successful for us to replicate, and we can talk about that in prioritization. I attended a session on changes to our state accountability system. One thing that caught my attention there was adding APIB pass rates to our... What's the word? I'm looking for the school... The School Performance Framework, thank you, which I thought was interesting in that how does that work with our efforts to increase access and opportunity to those, and are they maybe in direct conflict? Another thing that stood out was a talk around laws and charter schools and providing services for students with disabilities. So another way to reflect on our policies. And then the last one was... What's the last one? Oh, graduation guidelines and the menu of options from the CDE and how schools are approaching that similarly or differently. So I thought that overall was interesting and things I hope to bring up in our prioritization meeting.
Thanks, Nicole. Kitty, you want to go next? I cut you with your mouth full. Okay. Beth?
I'll go in a moment.
Okay. Who wants to go next? Richard?
Just to let you know that I attended the community meeting up in Lafayette. It was the... And Dr. ... Gosh, I'm telling you, it's tiring tonight. For some reason, I'm just tired. Jane, Dr. Hill, he was there, too, and so was Laura, and it was the anti-racist African-American committee or something like that. I think I have the name maybe mixed up a little bit, but the presentation that was made there that night from our school district was pretty comprehensive in terms of what we're doing around tackling the issues up in schools as it relates to our African-American kids and some other kids that are not getting along very well. And it seems like one particular school is having a lot of issues around that, and I've talked to Dr. Anderson about that, and he knows what school I'm talking about. But anyway, that was a pretty good community meeting that I went to. Some of the community members were pretty angry, and it seems like they're still very concerned that we're not moving fast enough to be able to support their children in the school system. I also want to thank all the speakers that came here tonight, and we will be talking about the annexation, I think, sooner during our consent agenda discussion. So the other community meetings that I've been to have been with the Latino community, and they have also talked a lot about bullying in the schools. We do have a bullying policy, and they're concerned that what's on paper is not being followed in some of our schools, so I think it's something that we should maybe take a look at, too. And the Casby Conference, it's always fun to be up there. I attended, I think about the best session that I attended was the one on the REED Act. And that was provided by the Department of Education, and I went there specifically to find out what the requirements were as it relates to parents participating in the development of the REED Act plans for their children. And what I found out is that it's there. It's a requirement. However, it's not being followed very well, and I mentioned to the presenter that maybe you ought to follow up with the Department of Education to see what they can do to do an audit, you know, or something like that, so that we can actually find out how well it's being utilized. And I know that teachers are pretty well taxied in terms of all the work that they have to do, and then now to be able to do this other stuff is also pretty... A lot more for them to do, especially after COVID and all that, so. But I would like to see for ourselves, to see what we're doing around engaging the families and the parents around development of those particular REED plans for our kids in our schools, so.
Beth?
I just want to thank all of tonight's presenters and for sharing your thoughts and coming before us tonight. It's really helpful for us, give us a lot to think about. Regarding Casby, I think for me, my number-one highlight was last year and this year is our time with the students, the Youth Equity Council. I mean, it's so energizing and amazing to be around them, hear their questions. I tell you, the students of today are just amazing. When I feel down about the state of the world, you interact with, like, our high school kids, and you feel pretty darn hopeful about the future. So, and I think some of our Youth Equity Council leaders are just incredible leaders. So for me, that was the highlight. They brought up some very thought-provoking questions and some observations that I'm hoping that we're going to push in on for next year's conference. So, yeah, I think we're really a standout leader when it comes to bringing our youth with us and down to the conference. So that's my comment for tonight.
Stacy?
Thanks to everyone who came to speak tonight. Regarding Casby, I'm... This is my third year, I guess, going. One year was virtual, I suppose. And I'm always struck by the other school board members across the state that we have a lot more in common than not, and it's just really helpful to hear that we're not the only ones dealing with certain issues, that whether it's an urban or rural, front-range or western-slope school, we all really are dealing with the same issues, and that's... It's comforting. Yeah. That's my report.
Lisa?
Yeah, I think the highlight for me was an Eagle County presentation on how the school district had engaged in building housing for teachers. They had prioritized that as not only a core value but as a necessity in both recruiting and retaining teachers, and it was fascinating. I wasn't sure how many people would attend a presentation like that, and then found that it was standing room only when I walked in the door, which I think emphasized the degree to which this is an issue that we are trying to solve statewide. And like Beth, I think, you know, the highlight is always also spending time with our Youth Equity Council and hearing about this year... They spoke a great deal about being representatives of the work we do in this district around trying to make our schools more inclusive places with better representation and lower disproportionality, and the experiences they had of trying to share that work across the state, and I thought that was fascinating, and maybe that's an experience they'd like to come and share publicly with us and with our district. And I was remiss in not thanking BVEA before, so I'll just jump in now. Thank you. That was a lovely presentation, and I really appreciate it.
Okay, Kitty?
I'd like to thank everybody who spoke today. Excuse me. Like others have said about Casby, I really enjoy our time with students. It keeps me grounded, knowing that's exactly why we're here, is our students, and we have some amazing kids. I'm always impressed with what they can do, with what they know, with, you know, how they think. Oh, and there was one more thing I was going to say, and I can't remember it. No, it was about Casby. Oh, right. Learning from, you know, other board members across the state. Every time I go, I realize how fortunate we are as a district, as a board, and with our super... our superintendent. There are so many districts that are having so many problems and, you know, dysfunction among the board and the superintendent, and we don't have that, and we're just so lucky.
I'd like to thank all the speakers again for taking the time and for their patience as we worked out the technical difficulties. And then I'd like to do a shout out to the man behind the booth back there, Randy, because I learned that he is now the president, incoming president of COSPRA. I think they, it's the Public Relations Group in Colorado. And so, congratulations. I think he will do a. So thank you, Randy, for all that you do to guide us through communications and through public relations, and we're giving you a shout out back there. For, for Casby, a couple of things. Obviously, I also really enjoyed meeting with the students and always enjoy hearing their perspectives and how we can make sure that we focus and center our, whatever we're doing around their needs and making sure that they get to be the best that they can be as a result of coming to our schools. One quick thing that I do want to mention is that for those of you who didn't have the joy of going to the business meeting, which you're actually able to go to even if you're not a delegate, Casby is going to undertake this year a process of rewriting its bylaws, and will be trying to draw members not just from the Board of Directors, but from kind of across the state, so stay tuned for that. I know you will all be on the edge of your seats wanting to attend the bylaw breakout sessions and the bright bylaw conversations going forward, but it's actually really important work, so I will continue to bore you with details as that, as that work kind of goes forward. So, thank you to everybody for making Casby a success, the convention. And one of the highlights again for me, again, was the rural breakfast. I remember going to those when it would be me and like 10 people in the room, and now there were like 700 people in the room. And the power that the Rural Alliance has brought, and as we all have experienced now, I think rural board members feel like they have a voice and can partner with us in a way that I don't think they felt in years past. So I think it's pretty exciting to think about the work that we can do going forward with all of our board members from across the state. And then just a couple of quick things. I want to join in Rob's, thank you to our community for supporting the bond. It's going to be really exciting to go forward to see the great work that we're going to be doing with the bond, and so I look forward to hearing from our Bond Oversight Committee when we get that put together and trying to figure out what all that will look like as we go forward. So it's really exciting work, and I'm super excited about the opportunities and the partnerships that we're going to have as we try to figure out the C T E programming and all of that that comes from the bond. And then just two kind of quick words of caution. You guys will probably also get tired of hearing me talk about how nervous I am for the upcoming legislative session, but I attended a town hall last night with President Fenberg and two of our legislators, Amabaly and Joseph. And to say that we have a lot of work to do, I think they will be good partners for us, but I'm just really nervous about some of the things that I saw in the chat and some of the issues that were being raised. And then this morning, Nicole and I were on a call with Speaker McCluskey, and I, I just am concerned about some of the issues that are going to be coming up around school finance, but we're going to put all those in the able hands of our CFO, who will navigate us through all of that without any challenges, I am sure. Right, Bill? So, anyway, thanks to everyone for, like I said, for hearing your stories about Casby, and it's also really good just to see you all down there and to kind of see you outside of an environment of being at the D I S O. That was nice as well, so. I will turn it over now to, to you, Rob.
Thank you, Board President, Get Part Members of the Board. At this point in time, we're on to our information items, portion of the meeting, and 6.1 is the 2324 Budget Development Process and Budget Outlook. And so as our CFO, Bill Sutter, heads on up here, he'll be giving you just an update on where we are in the process and talk about some of the information we have to date in regards to the budget process. And so, Bill, I'll turn it over to you.
We need a bigger lectern. Okay.
Madam President, Members of the Board, Dr. Anderson, I'm here to kick off the budget development process for the 202324 fiscal year, school year. We do this every December at the December Board Meeting to kind of set the stage for information and providing some timelines and information out to the public, as well as the board and district staff, community members, as to what the budget development process looks like. So first off, I'll go through the timeline and milestones. I've been doing this presentation for about 10 years now, so it's pretty consistent. But we start off with what we consider our stakeholder input sort of timeframe, so it's about 10 months. There's ample opportunity for all the stakeholders within the community, whether they're district organized committees and councils, or opportunities for folks to come to the board meetings. But it covers many months. Next, we layer in the dates of the board meetings and work sessions, just to sort of set the stage of when they are. Obviously, there's a couple of months that only have one board meeting and one work session, but again, it's just to lay the scene of when activities are happening during the process. Next, we layer in our, what we call our data inputs. So these are things like when the inflation rate is set, when we get open enrollment information, when the legislature starts and stops, the state revenue forecast, all those things that provide data inputs into the budget development process. It's evident that we're getting data all the way up until June, when the board adopts the budget. So this is information that comes all throughout the process. Next, we have what we consider our feedback opportunities. So these are the specific dates of board meetings and work sessions where there's a specific board discussion on financial matters that are scheduled. So for example, January 17th, we bring forward our draft strategic financial plan. February 14th, the second quarter financials, mid-year analysis. And then April 11th, the work session to review the preliminary budget, and then also a board meeting to present that. So again, specific dates when budget development and financial matters are discussed. Next, we layer on our action items. So these are things that the district or board undertakes. So the sort of thin gray bar there, the distribution of staffing allocations out to schools, that's a major commitment of resources within the district. So this is, covers across three months, but it happens even before the board adopts the budget in order to get moving with hiring and staffing our schools, and then all the way up until the statutory deadline of June 30th for adoption of the budget. Typically, the board has been adopting the budget at the first meeting in June. So when we layer all these on together, it sort of paints the picture of when actions are happening, when we get information, when the board is discussing specific budget and financial matters, and just lays out that picture sort of in that nice timeline. Next, I'll talk about the September revenue forecast. So this is the most recent one that's in place. The next one comes out next week in December, the December or second quarter forecast. So it's the best information we have at this point in time, but with the September revenue forecast, I think this is kind of an interesting chart because it shows that there's sort of limited information that the state has in order to develop this forecast, only 14% of the information coming into them. So it's a bit vague, it's, you know, what the forecasters and economists have to do, but when we move to the December forecast, there's over twice as much information, so it's a much better forecast being halfway through the year. So we'll definitely look forward to that coming out next week. Some information that came out of that forecast, the general fund revenues, this is the state general fund, was revised down through the fiscal year '24, lower income and sales tax revenues. Inflation was projected to be up a little bit from the June forecast. So this is the Legislative Council staff, so the state economist that does this projection. All told, to be noted that the Office of State Planning and Budget has a forecast that they do, and so those can differ slightly, but the, the state revenue forecasts are done by the Legislative Council staff. That inflation rate for calendar year 2022 is the inflation rate that is used for the funding in the School Finance Act formula. And then just the economy in general starting to transition from the really rapid recovery that we had to a more slow growth trend into the future. This chart's kind of interesting because it shows the revenue collections that are in, have been happening as well as what is in the forecast period. So in the current year, fiscal year '22, '23, the $18.6 billion number there, so that orange piece at the top of that, that's the sort of variability where there's some opportunity that if there is a bit of a recession in the current year, the forecast is high enough so that the current year spending shouldn't be impacted by that, which is brought up in a future slide here in a second. But also, just want to point out that this forecast would develop prior to the impacts of the '22 election, which I'll speak to in a minute. So when you look at the, the numbers off to the top right of that slide, in fiscal year '24 and fiscal year '25, about $700 million projected of cap above the, of the Tabor cap, and so that's an important point to remember here in a minute. Also, the, the projection in that September forecast for what the state had to spend or save for the next fiscal year, that '23, '24, is assuming current state law and all the reserves are kept in place and all the spending increases, there's about $1 billion in additional spending available above the current year. Or when you look at the side to side, the, the things that are committed in current law, current expectations, the increase to school finance, there's only about $85 million left at the state level to be able to add programs or enhance funding for something like K-12. Some of the risks, as with any good economist, will have risks associated with a forecast, so these are pretty standard from what has been reported in the June forecast as well. But the, the tightening of the monetary policy, supply chains, housing market, the continuing war in Ukraine, COVID-19, the referendum C cap is going to grow but is constrained. The risks are on the budget side, or on the expenditure side rather than the revenue side because that orange amount that's above the Tabor cap in the current year. Tabor refunds are a mechanism to address that, and the recession could constrain those revenues available. Cash funds are always a concern because they can impact what the state has available. We can have a discussion at some point in time about how cash funds impact the state revenues. There's a pretty good graphic that describes that with a bucket and water filling up and, and what refunds have to come out of, but I didn't include that in this. So looking forward to the budget development outlook and challenges for the district. So the governor's budget's always our first look at what might be on the horizon. We like to consider it a floor for K-12 funding and not the ceiling. The governor included 8.3% inflation, so just slightly above that 8.2% number that the Legislative Council staff came out with in September. A statewide enrollment decline of 0.6%, about 5,300 students. Included in that, they, they do a forecast for every district in the state. It's not a, as precise a forecast as we do ourselves, or I should say Glenn does for us, but they did include about a 1.9% decline of enrollment for Boulder, about 600 students. So built into this forecast at state level, they do have a, a decline for Boulder of about almost 2% of students. 700 million increase for funding K-12 schools, average per pupil $861. It reduces or improves the budget stabilization factor by 35 million. It's a relatively small percentage that they improved it by, but it's now a negative 3% reduction to the School Finance Act funding. We still have in Boulder about 9.2 million remaining in that negative factor reduction as the, the governor's budget proposes. Also included, $325 million for Proposition E E or the universal pre-K. This increases funding by about $10 million from what was projected. I think what's particularly interesting with that is the annual revenues are about $180 million, so they're proposing to spend more than one year's worth of revenue in that. It does include some of the, the current funding within the Colorado preschool program as well as per pupil funding for the students of special education. The proposal increases the, the reimbursement of special education costs by $29 million. There's also $7 million to the, the Charter School Institute for their middle levy override match. There are concerns for sustainability beyond that next fiscal year with the structural imbalance in state funding and spending as they're, they're, they are including one-time resources in that total budget package. The J B C did an update, standalone from the, the revenue forecast back at the end of December. There were a couple of concerning things that were included in that. The staff, J B C staff, were recommending the addition of a luxury tax. I don't know why they called it that, but to allow funding, a middle levy match for low-capacity districts, or that's their, their terminology they used, which is just districts with low property values. So it would allow the increase of the total program middle levy override from 25%, but to 30%, so an additional 5%. But a quarter of that increase would go into this middle levy match for the low property value districts. Coupled with that, which is even more concerning, is a recommendation to include the operations and technology override, or the Debt-Free Schools Act, in the 25% general fund, general middle levy override maximum of 25, that 25%. So if that were to happen, it would potentially necessitate a $31 million cut to B V S D. We're not alone in this situation. It would include Cherry Creek, Littleton, Denver, I think another district, I'm not remembering now, but it's pretty concerning that J B C staff are coming out with a recommendation like that and not thinking of the implications of reducing funding to school districts. They also included a couple of these charts, I had this in here last year, of the increase in per pupil funding over this timeframe over the last decade. That's based on inflationary increases and also some of the buydown of the negative factor. But it's really important to remember that when you adjust for inflation, we're actually below where we were in fiscal year 2009, 2010. So back to the accountability conversation of why maybe things aren't changing as much as people think, maybe it's because the funding is not keeping up with inflation over the last decade plus of time. Also, the, there's an interim school finance committee that's been meeting for three years. They significantly focused on reviewing the cost of living factor within the School Finance They reviewed some alternative definitions. They reviewed some alternative definitions and methods of defining at-risk students. Districts weren't allowed to use the modeling tool that the legislative committee was without going through a legislator, which kind of created some mistrust in what that modeling tool was doing. And there were certainly some competing interests expressed, in my opinion, on the committee, where increasing funding for K-12 versus reducing funding for K-12 through factors like adjusting the cost of living factor to take money out and put it somewhere else, or to reduce the averaging from five years to three years in the School Finance Act. So again, there's this idea that some are supporting increasing funding and how to distribute more funding to schools, and then some other folks contemplating how to perhaps reduce funding to K-12. Out of that three-year effort, the McCluskey requested a bill to redo the School Finance formula. Zenzinger requested a bill to address adjustments to the Tier B special education funding, to improve it, I should say, focusing on, in the School Finance Act rewrite driven by at-risk students, recognize funding the rural, remote, and sparse school districts. The current Finance Act has a size factor in it, but it is agnostic as to where the district might actually exist and what kind of challenges that rural, remote, or sparse condition might have on funding or costs in particular. Stated to work towards targeting the high-cost-of-living areas through a new approach to cost-of-living adjustments. These are the terms that are used in the bullet points that were put out. So this is the extent of the information on this, that the bill is being drafted right now and is apparently going to come out in January. So I'm not trying to use vague language, this is the vague language that we were given on what it's going to look like. And then also, a redesign to account for declining enrollment or significant enrollment shifts. Again, this is a nod to adjusting the averaging, so whether you have to have a significant enrollment shift in order to qualify for declining enrollment, or including enrollment increases as well. So it'll be really interesting to see what comes out of this. And let's see, additional proposed changes, additional funding opportunities for programs like Ascent, PTEC internships, certificates, certainly exciting relative to our Grad+ work, but again, little details on, or few details on what that might look like. Some sort of phase-in to account for changes and the new at-risk definition, because while they've talked about it, they don't really have a way to collect some of the information they've talked about to define that risk students. And then this, allow for additional changes through modeling with other policymakers and community members, and the, there's challenges with this, which I'll speak to in a second here. So the concerns for Boulder in particular, we obviously know we have low numbers of at-risk students as currently defined, free and reduced lunch qualified students. The new methods of defining at-risk may not apply well to BVSD's suburban community with less dense population than urban centers, and some of the methods of collecting information that are better for a county or even a state, but they're very imprecise once you get down to something as small as a school district. This perception that the cost-of-living factor provides a windfall of resources to quote-unquote wealthy districts, this is not new, this has been under discussion for quite some time now, but it seems to have sort of created some stickiness lately that's a bit concerning because it just provides the resources that, with which we operate the district. And so to back up this, allow for additional changes through modeling with other policymakers. So that's the idea of, if you decouple the factors within the School Finance Formula, it kind of allows for annual changes by the legislature to possibly direct resources and mandate spending, which really infringes on local control. That, the School Finance Act has been so difficult to change is because of the nature of how it's designed, that it all goes together. So once you break that apart and say, these pieces are individual and we can change the numbers associated with them, well, maybe the number gets changed and then the legislature directs that funding into a specific thing that maybe Boulder has already addressed or has additional needs elsewhere. So that's kind of a concerning potential for a rewrite. And then with a revenue reduction with no limited or no opportunities to replace that is certainly concerning for Boulder. Also, lots of economic stuff here. Every year, the Business Research Division at the Leeds School of Business at CU puts out a state economic forecast until their calendar year, that's for our calendar year 2023, came out this last week on Monday. A couple of highlights from that, inflation is moderating but will remain high. We all know this, right? Inflation was highest in four decades, so that's not surprising for them to be reporting on it, but it is affecting all sectors of the economy. If you do a search on inflation in the hundred-odd-page report that they put out, in every sector of the economy, it's referencing some sort of inflationary impact. So that's why it's driving so much change in the economy. The state demographer also presented and talked about some of the long-term demographic The 2021 was the slowest population growth in three decades. Net migration and births are rebounding a little bit, so that is positive news. The 65-plus age group is the fastest growing in the state, but the 0-17 age group is the fastest declining in the state. So that's the population that helps us. And then less than 1% projected growth for 2023 overall in the state. Economic growth continuing but slowing, so we had very rapid economic growth in the prior months, it's starting to slow. The rising interest rates and Fed policy on tightening monetary supply has a, Leeds Business Research Division estimated 0.6 GDP growth is believed to be a bit optimistic among forecasters for the state. So it's, the outlook is not grim as far as economic growth, but it's definitely slowing from what we've seen in the previous, let's say, 12 to 18 months. Colorado is well above pre-recession employment. It's interesting, only half of the states, half of the 50 states, have recouped employment losses stemming from the pandemic, and we are, Colorado is above that. But we also have the highest, second-highest labor force participation rate in the country, which means the population is participating, perhaps in age groups that are not so much in other areas of the country. Good economists always like to talk about why their forecast is going to be off, and so they talk about tailwinds, headwinds, and unknowns. Tailwinds are the things that are supporting, and so just to, these are actually fairly consistent, but we do have employment growth, wage growth, consumption, so spending, retail sales, infrastructure spending, roads, and whether it's supported by federal or local resources, and the trade deficit is improving. The headwinds, that list is a bit longer than the tailwinds. GDP is not growing as much as would be hoped. The Ukraine conflict, inflation, interest rates, supply chain disruptions, worker shortages. So despite having that high participation rate, we are still experiencing worker shortages in Colorado. The Fed monetary policy, energy prices, manufacturing, and of course, unknowns can go kind of either way, but things like additional COVID variants that might come up, human behavior, China, whether their economy takes a dive or continues to support the overall global economy. Migration, birth rates, and remote work is a consistent topic that seems to be an unknown as to whether it's supporting or hurting the economy. So for Boulder Valley, the outlook, so we certainly will have to go into the 2023-24 school year, right sizing our staffing. So we have currently a number of staff on one-time resources that both when we projected enrollment and it didn't come in as projected, and also our staffing reserve that we use to balance out enrollment within some of our small schools. So this is just adjustments related to projected declining enrollment as well. Limited options for new ongoing expenditures, long-term funding concerns relative to declining enrollment, and certainly any School Finance Act changes, and most likely any new investments focused on employee compensation and continuation of current projects. The budget pressures, obviously enrollment shifting or declining, starting to, or enrolling smaller elementary classes, graduating larger classes, but it does mirror those state and national trends, so it's not unique to Boulder Valley. Staffing inefficiencies with those smaller schools and classes, employee recruitment and retention in a tight labor market will obviously continue to be a challenge. And certainly inflation for this year, it looks like it's going to be somewhat over that 8% year-over-year inflation, which certainly is continued operational and wage pressure, operational costs and wage pressures. Just a reminder, I've used this slide many times, but each 1% drop in enrollment, which is about 300 students, is about $3 million impact to the School Finance Act. The averaging does soften that impact over a few years, but certainly if that changes, that softening could be less soft. And with each 1% drop in enrollment is about 12 future, fewer teacher FTE and fewer support staff for the standard staffing formulas that we have. Continuing with those budget pressures, this is an interesting chart, this is national information, but basically job switchers have a higher wage growth than job stayers, as they call them. So folks are rewarded to jump jobs, and so that just means that in order to entice somebody to come to the district, you have to pay more, or to prevent somebody from leaving, you have to pay more. So it really just is a spiraling of those employee costs. Competition for workers with, again, this is that recovering of all the jobs lost in the pandemic and then some, so that competition just continues to remain real high. The ballot measures that were on the November ballot, so we had Proposition FF, which was a reduction of tax deductions, complicated, but the healthy school meals, so to provide free school meals to all students. Proposition 123 for funding for investments in affordable housing, referenced the Prop FF, about 100 million in revenue and somewhere between 70 and 100 million in cost. Proposition 123 is about 290 million diversion from the state general fund intended to come out of the amount above the Tabor cap, but it certainly will compete if revenues drop down to the Tabor cap in order to continue funding that. And then Proposition 121 reduces or decreases the state individual income tax rate from 4.55 to 4.4, it's about $400 million less will be collected at the state level, the general fund revenue loss. And of course, as was mentioned before, our Boulder Valley ballot measure 5A for property taxes for general obligation debt, for our critical needs capital construction program, 350 million in debt proceeds, and the $714 million maximum total payment over the life of that debt. Yay, they all passed. Well, sort of yay. The two in the middle are a little concerning because if we remember back to the projected revenue above the Tabor cap in the projection before the ballot measures, it was about 700 million above the Tabor cap, and the two of the propositions, both for funding investments in affordable housing at 300 million and Proposition 121 at 400 million, those are about 700 million in either commitments out of the general fund or reductions to general fund revenue. So that just makes for a pretty tight state-level budget going forward. Budget development next steps, so we have our state revenue forecast next week in January and February, state supplemental budgets for the current year, revised budget for the Boulder Valley in the current year, study in action in January, our mid-year analysis in the middle of February, and the annual audit report will come to the board at the end of February. Questions?
I'm trying, I want to find the slide it was on, but what is the luxury tax? Obviously, the legislature can't just levy a tax.
Right, it would be a local, a local mill levy option for a district to go out and request for their local taxpayers to fund that additional 5% of total program funding.
So that would just be permission to ask the voters?
Correct.
Okay.
Locally.
And the operations and technology override, I'm trying to find where it was, so I'll remember exactly what I wanted to ask about it. I can't find it. So can you explain that?
Sure.
And what it is they want to do about it?
So in 20, I think it was like 2013 or 2012, it was created in state statute, and we passed it in 2014, 2016. So I think it was put in statute in 2014, and we passed it locally in 2016. And so it's just a local mill levy option to fund maintenance, technology, and construction projects.
But what is it, was it the JBC?
The recommendation to include that amount in the 25% cap that currently exists. So currently, they're separate.
Right, okay, yeah, that was what I, I mean, I knew what the override was, I just didn't get what they were trying to do with it. And then Ascent?
That is the program where students are, go to college and they commit to a college program.
So they take a fifth year in high school, but they take college classes?
That's what that's called.
And then those are paid for by the state, yep.
Okay. Well, I was pretty sure it wasn't the other Ascent. Okay, that's all, thank you.
Other questions? Nicole?
Well, this all feels rosy. One thing that stood out to me on the slide as I'm thinking about the unknowns, we don't know what the legislators, legislation is going to do, we have to wait for a little while to figure that out, but there was a bullet that said something about operational inefficiencies at our smaller schools. And as I'm thinking about what can we do, what might we have to do, can we expand on what those operational inefficiencies might be?
Well, we have our long-range advisory committee looking into that in depth currently and discussing that. As far as what they might be, I mean, a small school on a per-pupil basis, dividing the cost of the principal over fewer students, that's an operational inefficiency. Utilities don't go up necessarily in a straight line with the number of students. Custodial support, the staffing inefficiencies with a Custodial support, the staffing inefficiencies with a smaller school, the inability to meet contractual obligations and maximums, and so the likelihood of additional staffing being needed to meet those obligations, you just don't have in a larger school.
I have a few questions. So Bill, do, will we receive enough money from the state to do the free lunch, or do we know yet?
The question really becomes how much does participation change? So we definitely saw a drop in participation from when it was free to this current year. And so does that rebound enough to offset the slight difference in what it will cost to do that?
So the answer is we don't know yet, but you'll let us know?
Yes.
Because we've always had to use some general fund support for our lunch because the reimbursement from the feds wasn't enough.
Correct.
And so was the formula based on the Fed reimbursement rate? So the assumption is we're going to have to support that as well, I think, unless fewer kids sign up.
Right, so you have to go through the process of community eligibility for a school to, the goal is to get as many students qualified for free or reduced lunch under the federal programs, so the state doesn't have to support that. So that's like step one. Step two, I believe, is you still have to file all the free lunch forms to make sure kids qualify so that the state doesn't have to pay for the students that do qualify. It's really to cover the students, the rest of the students. So there will be some additional managerial bureaucratic processing to implement it as well.
Because the feds will still provide their funding, so this is just to make up the gap.
Right.
You mentioned that the state is using one-time dollars to cover preschool. Do we know what our out-of-pocket is going to be to cover the mandate from the state for preschool yet, or is that still to be determined?
I think it's still a little bit to be determined as they continue to roll out new rules and procedures and information on a semi-regular basis. The slow rollout of the allocation of seats to districts is going to be challenging, and challenging for parents in the community to deal with because it's not, it's not our process, the state's process, where you apply and pick your top three choices of where you want to go, and if you get allocated somewhere that wasn't your top choice and then you want to wait, like how all that works, it's not our lottery process, bam, it's done, you get your 10 days to make your decision and you kind of know the answer. This is going to take weeks or months to roll out.
And parents are supposed to start applying in three weeks?
Yeah.
Just stating the obvious. Rob?
So I've been working with Tanya on this, on this topic, you know, what Bill's referring to, they're referring to as waves, and I think the point of contention that we have is that, you know, if we have parents that know that we, they want to come to Universal Preschool at BVSD, and we know that we want to have the seats, why would any system delay that and make them wait until, to try to almost like wait them out so they would pick other providers, is what it feels like. And we don't support that, and so we're working to continue to push on this, and, you know, we know that we're going to have an incredible preschool program that will be rolling out. Board members, you'll see that in January as a presentation to you all in the community. We're excited about that, and I know our communities, we've already got lots of interest in that, so more to come on that, but it's something we're pushing on.
Do you know how much of our funding comes from COLA?
Not off the top of my head.
So here, you didn't mention this, but I think it's because it's a year away, our ARPA dollars run out in a year, and we're going to have to budget because I think we're spending those dollars in ways that are making a difference. So figuring out in a place where we could be getting less COLA dollars, less declining enrollment dollars, less mill levy dollars, and then figuring out the cliff of the ARPA dollars going away, are those fair representations of some of the challenges you see?
Well, I think with the ARPA dollars, we have, the program that we put in place was clear, clearly identified as a three-year program with expectations and plans for that three years. So unlike some areas or other districts or other states that have used those resources to provide salary increases or hire regular staff, we, like we always do with any one-time dollars, are very clear about the expectations around that and the timeline associated with it. So while they are doing good things, we at least have that on the horizon with our, and most of it's focused on the differentiated funding for our high-need schools. We've been working on putting aside additional dollars to extend that program overall for all our schools. So it's in the mix of things that we definitely are keeping an eye on, but it's planned.
No, I understand it's planned, but if it's working, it would seem like we'd want to figure out a way to extend it. It sounds like you're at least thinking about short-term trying to extend it. Kind of a technical issue, are we hedging any of our energy costs we had in the past?
So we have long-term, or the contracts with gas.
And the other thing, and I know you'll be thinking about this, but Slide 24, I mean, words matter, so all we're going to do is redesign to account for declining enrollment. I think we need to be really clear with our legislators, that's not redesigning. It's, right, it's cutting. And work towards targeting high costs, that's us, so it's work towards taking money away. I mean, we just have to not let them get away, I think, with these like, oh, that sounds good, right, kinds of language. And on the call this morning, the whole redesign of the School Finance Act is to achieve equity, right? So I just think it's, I just see danger signs, Bill, because of the way that they're framing it with, you know, us and Cherry Creek and a few of the other high-performing, high-wealth districts in the, kind of in the headlights of where they're going to take money. And Kitty, the reason they're doing this luxury tax is that the mill levy overrides are really unequal, so school districts that have really low property wealth can't really raise enough money. And the state passed a law to try to support them, but didn't put any money into it. So they put $10 million in of one-time dollars, and that's it. So they're trying to find another way to raise money from us to go to those districts. Now, whether we agree with that or not is a different issue, but to me, it's, that's kind of what they're doing. Is that a fair statement, Bill?
Yeah, I mean, the other way I would describe it is redesign the School Finance Act in the name of equity in the same way of targeting our achievement gap by bringing down our top-flying students. That'll close the achievement gap, right? You bring down the top students, you don't need to bring down bottoms, right? You bring down the top. So that's what the redesign of the School Finance Act would look like, is let's bring down funding for some districts and bring it up for others, so.
I just want to follow up, you said about the luxury tax, so that would be, we would go to our voters to ask for money to give to other school districts?
We'd get to keep some, but some percentage of that would then go towards supporting the mill levy overrides for other districts.
Sort of like policy KH.
Exactly, yeah, I think that's not a bad analogy.
Except you technically can't give local property tax to another district.
Right.
Bring the local property tax in, and the state would reduce how much they give us and use that.
Right, and then that money would go.
So it would supplant some state funding?
Yes, correct. Just like it currently does as our rising property values and our fixed general fund mill levy, the uniform mill levy of 27 mills, is raising the local collection so that the state can reduce how much it needs to provide.
And then, so I don't have to drag you up here again, we're going to certify mill levies tonight, and for those who are paying attention to their property taxes going up, we're raising our operational mill because the state's requiring us to, but this is the last one, is that?
Yes, not the operational mill, the general fund.
General mill, general fund mills, sorry.
Yeah, the general fund mill, which is the School Finance Act, so the uniform mill to get with the target of 27 mills for all school districts. We had two increases, we had to do one mill last year and .92 something this year to get to the 27 mills.
So people see two tax increases, the one from the bond we just passed and one that's imposed by the state. So I just wanted to, like I said, rather than drag you up here again, explain that we don't have any control over that. The state's found a workaround to increase that so that everybody gets to close to 27 mills or fully funded.
Yep.
All right, well, I guess there's just a whole lot of questions we see going forward, and we'll see what the legislature, I hope they bring it out in January so there's time to look at it.
Look at it and work on it, and, yeah.
So thanks, Bill, this was really informative, I appreciate, oh, go ahead, Kitty.
Yeah, I do have one more question because they, the preschool hours were raised from 10 to 15, and is the state paying for that additional 5?
Depending on the qualifications of the student, it's 10 or 15 of what's provided, I don't remember the details, but essentially, it's covered by the state.
Okay, thank you.
And in another sleight of hand, we don't talk about it in terms of hours now, we talk about it in terms of part-time, halftime, and full-time, because it sounds much better.
It's not universal full-time by any stretch, to clarify.
Thanks again, Bill. Rob?
Thanks, Bill. Our next update, board members, is an update for you all on bilingual education. Board members, as you know, we've been working on this this semester, and here to provide an update for you is Dr. Nativity Miller, Assistant Superintendent of Opportunity and Access, and our Director of CLDE, Dr. Kristin Nelson Steinhoff. And so, Dr. Miller, I'll turn the presentation over to you.
Good evening, President Gebhardt, members of the board, Dr. Anderson. I am grateful tonight to be sharing a status update in regards to our bilingual education work that we began sharing with you in April of 2022. Our strategic plan, as you know, is in direct correlation of our goals, which are to engage in challenging engaging and relevant instruction for emerging bilingual students, as well as customize supports, which directly supports the needs of our emerging bilingual students as well. As a reminder, our initial internal assessment that we presented to you in April, we identified the following areas of need in regards to bilingual pathways. Fidelity to dual-language programming models, as well as the implementation of research best practices for emerging bilingual students through consistent bilingual instruction. Based on our internal CLDE assessment of services for emerging bilingual students last year, we identified four areas in which we recommended to be a priority for our district in creating greater opportunity and access and providing instructional best practices to our students. In April, I shared the identified areas, and today, our goal is to provide you with a status update in Area 2, Bilingual Education and Dual-Language Programming, and in Area 3, our bilingualism campaign. First, I would like to share the launch of our bilingualism campaign. The Boulder Valley School District has long valued bilingualism, bilingualism, understanding the benefits that it provides to both our students and community at large. In fact, as you know, we are one of the very few school districts in Colorado to offer dual-language schools, offering students to become bilingual and bilinguine in English and in Spanish. As BVSD works to strengthen the existing dual-language programs, we identified that this was an excellent time to build a better understanding of the benefits of bilingualism, dual-language programming, and the opportunities that knowing more than one language can open for our students. In October, in collaboration with our BVSD communications team, we highlighted the importance of bilingualism in an article published in The Spot, our family communication tool. Our communications team has developed some amazing posters, flyers, and postcards that have been going out to our schools and families that are here on the left. The elementary campaign is bilingual and proud and highlights bilingualism as a superpower, while the secondary campaign is my heart beats in two languages. Additionally, our team created a resource for families with specific ideas to support multilingualism at home. As part of our partnership with Grad Plus, we will also be starting celebrations and recognitions for our bilingual students starting in 5th grade. The goal of these recognitions is to begin celebrating our students in elementary school and emphasizing the value of their continued track of speaking multiple languages. While these are the beginning stages of our campaign, we are excited to continue to develop this campaign in partnership with our amazing communications team and continued input from our stakeholders. As again, also mentioned in April, one of our main focuses was on our dual-language programming and beginning to identify where we were misaligned in our programming and creating action steps to correct that misalignment. As mentioned previously, our overall goal was to ensure that our dual-language schools were aligned to the pillars of dual-language education from the center of implied linguistics. We want to emphasize that while the dual-language models may be different in each of our schools, our goal continues to be that all three schools are consistently aligned to these guiding principles. We are committed and have begun to re-ground the vision and goals that are focused on bilingualism, bilinguine, and social-cultural competence and realigning to the models as they were intended to be delivered. In the spring, we committed to not only gaining insight from our experts in the field, we also committed to community stakeholder input from our teachers, parents, students, and community partners. Our goals for improving programming for our dual-language schools is and continues to be a top priority. Today, we will update you on what has taken place in regards to that progress. In April, we identified a need for a program review for our dual, three dual-language elementaries. Again, our goal was to get an outside review from our experts in the field that would help us realign our schools to the pillars of dual-language. In August, school leaders were informed of the group that would complete the review. Leaders met with myself and our CLDE Director, Kristin Nelson Steinhoff, to review the process for rolling the information to school staff and preparing for their visit. Leaders presented to their school staff the components of the review, and we worked with them to prepare for the visit. In September, Dual Language of New Mexico engaged in the review through focus groups with our school and district staff, through classroom observations and parent input nights. In October, Dual Language of New Mexico provided us with written reports for all three schools as well as the district, and provided a consultation meeting with myself and Director Kristin Nelson Steinhoff. In November, school leaders and identified staff attended La Cosetja Dual Language Conference, where they kicked off their learning in dual-language education while also spending time reviewing their school reports with their team. Upon return, leaders met with their school staff and began the process of reviewing the reports to begin identifying their next steps. In December, the school reviews were sent to the parents the first week of, the first week of December. Principals are providing a minimum of three opportunities for our school communities to meet with them, for example, coffee with the principal, to answer any questions they may have and share next steps to specific schools. Leaders are engaging with their school teams to begin processing the information and identifying actions. Also, beginning in December, our dual-language team began meeting with our dual-language school leaders for a principal support group to work through their actions and identify support and resources needed as they kick off this work. In January and February, our next steps as we move into the second semester will be to kick off our professional learning as one of the recommendations for all three dual-language schools, to realign and reignite our understanding of the dual-language essentials, and to provide our staff the opportunity to continue their learning as dual-language professionals. While we are still in the beginning stages of unpacking the recommendations from our dual-language experts, our teams are very engaged, they are energized, and they are committed to begin action the second semester. Our final status update is that in the area of expanding Our final status update is that in the area of expanding our K-12 bilingual pathways. In April, we committed to expanding bilingual pathways specifically in our east Lafayette region of the district. As of today, our team has engaged in extensive listening and input sessions from our stakeholders in the Lafayette region, beginning late in September and finishing early in November. First, we hosted a Lafayette principal meeting to share and gather input from the, for, for the process for engaging our stakeholder groups. We then provided leaders with a presentation they could take to their staff and process what that would, what process that would be taking place with teachers, students, and staffs. Our focus groups began, and we met with teachers from Angivine, Sanchez, and Pioneer. We then had the great pleasure of, of meeting with our students from Angivine Middle, Manhattan Middle, Sanchez Elementary, and Pioneer Elementary. And following these stakeholder groups, we then met with our FET teams from Angivine, Pioneer, and Sanchez, and finished up with an all Lafayette parent night that was held at Centaurus High School. The following themes were identified through coding all the stakeholder input group data that we engaged in over the course of the last few months. This data provided our team with valuable information and insight in identifying the needs and vision for our students, teachers, and parents as we identify an additional pathway for bilingual programming. The themes that arose were, one, under instruction. Stakeholders want dual-language programming to provide high levels of language development in both English and Spanish. Teachers are in support of dual-language programming with consistent professional learning. Students want more instruction in Spanish with teachers who understand language acquisition. The second theme that arose was under opportunities. All stakeholder, stakeholders want students to have access to a variety of programs and course offerings in both languages. Students want the opportunity for content classes, advanced classes, and electives in Spanish, as well as the opportunity to play sports. Teachers expressed a hope for multiple pathways for bilingual students in Lafayette. And there was a hope for student choice with advanced studies, extracurricular sports, electives, and with, and electives within a school. Our third theme was under leadership. Community members would like to ensure that this program is well-planned, maintained, and supported for the long term. Some families expressed a concern about a quick timeline and want to ensure that we are ready with well-planned implementation. Teachers expressed that they want the program to be implemented with the help of experts and sound practices. And teachers also want consistent support and professional learning and would like a focus of onboarding new teachers in a way that is aligned and integrated to their current initiatives. Our fourth theme was under materials and resources. Community members would like to ensure that the program is well-planned and has sufficient materials. Teachers want knowledgeable staffing and have, and that we have the financial backing to ensure its success. Our students' hope was for more books in Spanish. And our educators want us to take the time to find qualified staff, good materials and curriculum, and appropriate physical space. Our fifth theme was under communication. Our teachers and community members want transparent, intentional, and clear communication. And our teacher and community in, and our teachers and community want input and every, are requesting that they have input along, along the way. Our sixth theme was under climate and culture. Teachers want to ensure that the implementation of the dual-language strand will include a whole-school strong mission and time for planning and consideration of how to keep the school integrated. Teachers expressed a need to have time for increased readiness and to prepare for launching. Community members want to ensure that our dual-language program is equitable, integrated, and integrated within our school and our community. And our students want to feel like bilingualism is valued by the school and by their teachers. Our seventh theme was under location. And while our input sessions did, did not ask stakeholders where they want the, the expansion located, through the questions we were able to identify, that our students and community members expressed a wish for expansion to remain local and accessible to their feeder schools. Some teachers expressed a need for thoughtful implementation based on the school identified. And our final and last theme that we were pulled from our stakeholder groups was under differentiated pathways. Community members hope for the dual-language pathway to expand into high school and feel as though a middle level, adding middle level would begin that implementation. They want multiple entry points for students who are heritage speakers throughout their education. Our educators shared that they want to, they want to make sure there are opportunities for emerging bilingual students to enter dual-language programming, even if they are not coming from a dual-language elementary. And students want multiple class options that are provided in both languages and more possibilities moving from elementary school. We are extremely, extremely grateful for the extensive time that each stakeholder group provided to our team and believe that each component of their hopes for expansion is supported in our decisions around increasing bilingual pathways for students. We are committed, as we've said, to increasing community opportunities for students and acknowledge that dual-language programs lead to higher student outcomes when they are provided to students for a longer period of time so that they have the ability to reach native-like proficiency. We have reviewed the data and identified themes just mentioned, and we have utilized the input to begin planning the expansion, expansion for our dual-language middle school programming that will begin, that we hope to begin in the fall of 2023 with a new sixth-grade class. As you can see on this slide, the expansion provides us with three middle schools in BVSD with a bilingual pathway. At Mankatin, we currently offer Spanish LA and Spanish Social Studies and Science, and will work with their team to add a Spanish elective. At Casey, we currently offer Spanish LA and Reading, Spanish Social Studies, and Folklore Dance. Moving forward, we hope to work with their team to add a content area in Spanish and an elective in Spanish for all. And finally, at Angivine Middle School, we are excited for our students to add on to the existing Spanish LA course with the addition of a Spanish contents course and one elective in Spanish. Both providing our students and our families an additional bilingual pathway in our Lafayette region. In closing, and to summarize the status updates for the work of the bilingual education, we have began and will continue to engage in our bilingualism campaign. We have engaged in a consultation process with the needs assessment for our dual-language schools. Rollout began in November of 2022 with action starting in January of 2023. We have engaged stakeholders with the input sessions and data gathering to begin expanding bilingual pathways. And we are on track to open a sixth-grade dual-language strand in the fall of 2023, as well as increased Spanish course offerings in our other middle schools. We are excited to provide our students at Angivine Middle School with a dual-language strand and will begin engaging our stakeholders in the planning, that dual-language pathway in a manner that meets the needs of our students and is supportive to our staff. Thank you for the time this evening. We are committed to our students, our staff, and our families and are very, very proud of the work that we have begun. And while we have worked to continue with this implementation, we are very hopeful and feel extremely supported to ensure that we can provide high-quality program and instruction, as well as the preservation of language and culture. And with that, Director Kristin Nelson Steinhoff and myself are open to answer any questions.
Thanks so much, board members. Richard, you got to have at least a question or a yay.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I think it's a long time coming and certainly appreciative of all the work that both of you have done and your team. And just a few questions. One is regarding the needs assessment, that, the needs assessment was conducted by New Mexico Dual Language.
Correct.
And then you got the stakeholder input. I read the needs assessment and I also, and I heard the stakeholder input for the first time tonight. And it seems to me like you got a lot more out of the stakeholder input than you got from that assessment, okay? Just to put it out there. I, I truly appreciate the, the stakeholder input because I think that's, that's the, that's the genesis, it seems to me, of a, a good model over Angivine. I'm curious to find out, you know, what the strand is going to look like. Maybe later on you'll report on that. And, and the content, in terms of Spanish language content for content areas. Are we looking at one content area, are we looking at two, are we looking at three, you know? And then the question on the bilingualism campaign, I appreciate what you're doing there. My question is, you know, because on the bilingualism campaign, one of the things that you mentioned was supporting bilingualism at home. How is that being done and what are you doing with that? I'm, I'm just curious to find out, when you said that, what you meant by it. Are you talking about Spanish-language-speaking families supporting bilingualism at home? Are you talking about your English-speaking family supporting bilingualism at home? What does it look like, you know, that kind of stuff?
Yeah, so I'll answer your first one about Angivine, and then I'll, Kristin's been working closely with Randy on our campaign. But for Angivine in term, we already think, for Dr. Anderson allocating the FTE last year, we have that Spanish LA course currently being taught at Angivine. Our goal is to add one Spanish content course, and that is part of what we'll engage that planning team in to identify what course that is. Is that science, is that social studies? And then the Spanish elective is our goal for next year. So adding a content class and then the Spanish elective.
Because currently, Casey has the social studies content in Spanish.
Correct.
Have, did you get any feedback at all in your, the stakeholder input was only for the Lafayette side, not for the Casey side?
Correct.
Okay. The reason I'm asking is because I've heard some concerns around the Casey model when you're looking at the social studies content versus other contents.
Yes, and we, we met with leaders actually just this last week from Casey, and that's something that we're going to be working with them as soon as the break is over. We have a planning session to look through what our pathway will be for the, that bilingual pathway and start working with them on what those courses can look like, and then some instructional conversation around how to better serve our kids in those classes.
And then the, on the stakeholder input, you also, one of the themes was leadership.
Correct.
And, and I know that currently, Angivine is, is in the process of looking at new leadership there.
Correct.
And the families have been invited to provide what a new leader would look like in, in that particular school. And has that, has that been done, has that been allies and all of that already and?
My understanding, and unfortunately, Robin is not here right now, but they did a staff input session already, and they've laid out the dates of when the hiring will be. The posting has been identified. We've worked with her in terms of looking at preferred qualities for a new leader. And then they will engage in multiple stakeholder input sessions, both with parents and with staff through that process.
And my final question regarding instruction is, do you have enough bilingual teachers to do the stranded?
I knew you were going to ask that question. We have, so that is something we're going to have to work with as we, now our next steps are to look through that. We have some elementary, actually, we've had a sub yesterday who reached out to us. She's certified in social studies, she's Spanish, and she's said, I heard about this, I'm, I'm very interested. Kristin got her name. We have some elementary teachers who are also content certified, and they're interested in moving, you know, or expanding into middle level. We are also in initial conversations with Dr. Hill, and Dr. De La Cruz has supported us with looking into supporting some visas for, for teachers from Mexico and.
Central and South America.
Central and South America. And so that's another thing that we're in the process of right now and hopefully able, have the ability to sponsor a few visas to start next year.
That's wonderful. Let's hope that we are more successful in the visa program than we were in the past because we had the same program at Angivine a few years ago. It didn't work out because of the leadership, okay? And I, I'm glad that Kristin is there next to you because I know that Kristin was a principal at Pioneer, and she had her thoughts regarding by, a K-8 bilingual school at Pioneer. And, and I know that's come up, that's a topic that's come up in our community before. And I wonder, did the community inputs or the stakeholder inputs have anything to say about that?
Yeah, we had some stakeholder input from families at Pioneer that expressed a possible interest in that. Not a huge number, but we did have some. I think where the way we, when we looked and coded the data, we had lots of student input about their experience and wanting a middle-level experience, both with electives and with athletics. That was something that came through. And clubs and extracurricular activities that they were really passionate about and wanting for their middle school experience as well.
Because, because I, I've thought of a couple of configurations where you wouldn't be trouble for staff at all.
Right.
But that's not in the cook, in the, in the oven, I guess, if you want to sort of speak, so, but anyway.
I'll let Kristin answer, though, the bilingualism campaign question.
Sure, so I, I will let you know around the campaign for bilingualism. Before launching and before proceeding, we also met with community stakeholders, both at Boulder High School and at Centaurus High School, and got feedback from families around what, you know, what were their ideas in terms of elevating bilingualism? And primarily by, and primarily bilingual families, so families who speak Spanish at home, and, and what were ways that we could help support. And so we talked about the celebrations at fifth and eighth grade and, and of, you know, seal of bilinguacy as being the culminating celebration. And we created the CLDE, we created a, a, a guide for families or of some recommendations about ways in which to elevate language at home and be proud of the language that we speak at home. And, and the intention really is for those families who speak languages other than English at home to really feel that pride in that other language as they're developing English in our, in our monolingual programming and, and developing the bilingualism through our, our Spanish and English bilingual programs.
Very much, just another quick question here in terms of the needs assessment, especially at Pioneer. There, the 90/10 model at Pioneer, when kids go into kindergarten or preschool, they speak 90% their language, their home language and?
No, actually, the 90/10 refers to the amount of Spanish that is used. So students speak, all students are instructed 90% of the time in Spanish.
Right, okay.
So not in the language that they speak at home.
For Spanish speakers?
For English speakers as well.
Okay.
So English speakers are spending 90% of their time.
Thank you, thank you. And then, and then after that, it starts.
Then they do 80, yep, 80/20, 70/30.
So they'll, so they'll reach a 50/50.
50/50 by fourth and fifth grade, mhm.
One of the issues that have been brought up at Pioneer is the, not the lack for, for effort, but the, the numbers of emerging bilinguals that could be at Pioneer but are not at Pioneer. A lot of them go to Sanchez. That, and many of them open and roll from Sanchez to Pioneer for that purpose. Is there any kind of a campaign going on as, because I, you know, when you're looking at your campaign as it relates to be proud to be bilingual, a lot of, a lot of folks have a misunderstanding on what it is to be bilingual or that they don't want their kids to speak Spanish because they want, they would prefer them to learn English. They really don't understand how bilingual education works. Is there anything going on with that?
Yeah, so part of, sorry, Kristin, I'll let you know. Part of our next steps in terms of that bilingual campaign, we realize that we're at the initial stages of that. And so our next approach is to do exactly what you're saying, is we want to educate our families. So whether that's, you know, bilingual nights, both our, our dual-language schools have asked for that, but also just in the community. So where, in which we can go and, and talk about what we offer here in BVSD because it's not offered anywhere else. And so we've, that is our next layer of our campaign is to educate both our families internally and, you know, where we can land, we're not sure, but to, to do some educating on the benefits of bilingualism and the opportunities that they have here in BVSD.
The other, you know, the other challenge is, in, that's inherent in that is also the open enrollment process and that that tends to be a challenge for many of our, many of our families, really understanding and maneuvering through that system and how to. families, really understanding and maneuvering through that system and how do we continue to make that easier and more streamlined for families as well.
If every Spanish monolingual Latino family in Lafayette took advantage of open enrollment, they would open enroll all their Sanchez kids to Pioneer, you would end up with no kids at Sanchez.
Right, right.
Is there anything going on at Sanchez to offer bilingual opportunities?
Not that I know of right now.
Over the years, I mean, I will say that over the years, they have demonstrated the value for bilingualism in engaging in things like a Spanish spelling bee. They, for the past three years, have sent students to the state spelling bee and those students have done well. And they have teachers that are there helping to support those kids in Spanish. And so there are ways in which they absolutely are demonstrating a value for bilingualism.
Thank you very much. And again, it's been a long time coming and I really appreciate your efforts and hopefully we'll have a great middle school bilingual strand next year.
Thank you.
Vifa?
Could you go to slide 12? Yours is a little different than ours and I had some questions. So I think my first question is, I just want to make sure I understand what the plan is. So KC is staying the same, Angivine is new and Manhattan is being shrunk. Is that correct or?
Increase. So Manhattan currently has Spanish LA, Spanish Social Studies and Spanish Science. We are hoping to add a Spanish elective at Manhattan. KC currently has Spanish LA, Spanish Social Studies and Folklore Dance. And our hope would be to add a Spanish content course and add a Spanish elective. And then Angivine currently has Spanish LA and we want to add the content course and the elective.
Thanks. Sorry, I didn't understand those pluses.
Yeah, you're right.
If we're looking at like what a best practice model is for middle school bilingual education as part of the K-12 plan, do any of these schools or all of them match up to it? Or are these all sort of more piecemeal examples that could be expanded upon?
They all can be expanded upon and we're really excited to be able to align the three in these ways. So while KC has the infrastructure for an elective and a content area, not all of the students that participate in their Spanish Language Arts are able to participate in the BILE or the Social Studies. And so we want to increase those options for all students because best practice, both from our colleagues at Dual Language Education of New Mexico and the Center for Applied Linguistics, really say that best practice is three courses at the middle level in Spanish.
And do we have a timeline or a plan for what that expansion would look like?
So we'll start with sixth grade for the upcoming school year and then add seventh and eighth grade thereafter.
Okay. And just, I think, one more question. You had mentioned the importance in your outreach that folks spoke about the need to have programs that were responsive for heritage learners. How was that reflected in the work we're doing?
So again, it's looking at in what ways can we welcome students from Sanchez who haven't participated in dual language learning but understand and speak Spanish beautifully, participate in the spelling bee. How do we welcome them in sixth grade into the dual language strand when they arrive at Angivine? That's an example of that, is what we're talking about there.
Okay. I mean, I look forward to hearing more. I think KC specifically was a school where I remember hearing that that was addressed a lot about heritage speakers who really wanted to participate and our programs just didn't meet their needs. So they were either frustrated or in classes that were too advanced and neither were working. But we're working on models that will be inclusive of their needs.
Absolutely.
All right. Well, it's late, so I'll leave it there, but thank you so much. This is really exciting.
Thank you.
Kitty?
I think this is really exciting, too. So I have a couple of questions. So do Columbine and Uni Hill feed into KC and Manhattan?
Potentially, yes. So they, we now will have locations where they could go from Uni Hill or Columbine because we don't have direct feeders and because of open enrollment, it's not a direct feeder, but we will have now three opportunities in all of our regions.
And so would the kids coming from the bilingual elementaries have priority, open enrolling into bilingual middles?
I don't, in terms of like the OE process, that would something I would have to talk to Mike and Robin about. But I believe first choices are being pretty close to being honored in terms of, you know, when they open enroll.
Because it would be a huge shame to have a kid graduate from, you know, any of the three elementaries and then not be able to continue
Right, yeah.
When we're going to all of this trouble so that they can.
We haven't had that issue yet.
And, oh, so if a kid in middle school is in the bilingual strand, then they're taking five solid classes? Spanish LA, English LA, Social Studies, Science and Math?
So they, we're, our hope is, like Kristin said, the goal would be three content, three areas of Spanish.
Right.
That could be an elective and it could be two content courses.
But regardless of what language, you know, the others are in, that still is five, right? Because they would have to have two LAs. Because they're not going to not have English LA, correct?
It is best practice for them to have a paired literacy, one in English and one in Spanish.
So would that be one class or would that be two?
It would be two classes. So what we, so what we have done for sixth grade in, specifically, sixth graders take a reading class and a Language Arts class in English.
Okay, so this is
And what they, what we do at these, what we will do at these three schools is they will take a Spanish LA and an English LA and the reading will be infused. When they be, when they do move into seventh and eighth grade, it does take one of their electives to continue to participate in that LA. And so we have to think about how do we really make it super fun and engaging for kids.
Yeah, because that does tend to be more work in the solids as opposed to the electives. And we want to definitely keep them going.
Right. And we, and as, you know, I mentioned, we met with both principals from KC and Manhattan and they are really looking forward to thinking outside and how we can expand the pathway and also make it engaging for kids.
Well, this is great. Thank you so much.
No problem. Nicole?
Thank you both. I appreciate the extensive community engagement outreach you've done in this. It's clearly been a lot of legwork and important in the process. So I have a couple of questions to clarify. You mentioned realigning to the elementary school's current model. Can you explain a little bit more about what you mean by that and how that may or may not benefit students as they matriculate and converge and diverge into different middle school offerings?
So last spring, last year, we engaged in, you know, as I took on this role and had the opportunity to start, you know, seeing what was working and what was not working. One of the things that we identified was that the model, whether it was 50/50 or 90/10, is we had diverted a little bit from following the model as intended to be followed. And so our goal was to realign to the models as well as, as well as get a little more clear on the dual language learning as connected to the Center of Applied Linguistics. So when we say like that realignment, that's what we were looking for, is how we sort of, over the course of lots of things, COVID, you know, you know, different ways of schools just trying to like meet the needs of kids, we just were finding that we weren't being, we weren't, we didn't have fidelity to the model or the instructional practices. And so the goal was to get an outside person's perspective and to take those recommendations to help us get realigned. And the leaders are using that information to, not just that information, but other information to help them sort of like refresh and reignite what they're doing at their, at their elementary schools. They feed into, I think your question is, they feed it then into another middle level and how does like a different program affect their instruction? Is that correct? So our goal then is, as Kristin said, is that in fourth and fifth grade at Pioneer, for example, we would hope to be at 50/50, which then when they would leave there, all our kids would have had that instruction going into the middle school.
And evidence doesn't suggest that one model is better than the other. As long as you're adhering to a model with fidelity, both models can have positive outcomes for students.
Right. What we, yeah. And what we had asked when we asked for the review was that, that they look at the models as they were. We didn't want to make a recommendation to, you know, have a school go another direction. We wanted to just get clear about being closer to the model that they were intended, that they were designed for.
But research really points to dual language as the big umbrella being the best practice in terms of serving emerging bilingual needs. And so it doesn't matter if it's which language allocation model it is, if it's a 50/50 or a 90/10, it's really if we are adhering to those pillars and there's a book about that large that has, full of rubrics around best practice and implementing best practice that comes up to us from the Center for Applied Linguistics out of Washington DC, that really those are the, those are the important pieces to be focusing in on.
Thank you for that. And then reading the reports from the New Mexico, a couple of the comments referred to gentrification of some of our dual language schools. And I, my assumption is that this campaign is trying to help draw in more native speakers. Other thoughts around as our demographics shift as cost of housing increases, enrollment declines, you know, that what we're putting in today, do we feel strongly that we can sustain it for 10 years as populations do shift? And just kind of thinking through that a little bit.
Yes. That is going to be a tricky thing and I think that's why our next layer of the campaign is how do we increase our enrollment of our emerging bilinguals and our native Spanish speakers? And that is, you know, with our open enrollment, the way it is, that is something we're going to have to navigate with, you know, our, with our team and with Mike Wilcox in how do we process through that as that is a structure that we have here.
And my last question is more, I don't know, maybe basic is, my understanding right now is that we currently provide some transportation from, for students from Lafayette into Manhattan if they're going to continue that Spanish language track. As we consider adding Angivine or as we are adding Angivine and as busing continues to be a problem in this district, are we considering how we might shift that practice, alter that practice if students want to stay closer to home? Are we giving them opportunities to maybe switch outside of our normal open enrollment timelines from Manhattan to Angivine if they so choose, so they can stay centered in their local communities? How are you guys thinking about those nuances as we're adding, and I'm grateful we're adding these programs out in Angivine?
Yeah. So our next layer and our next push is going to be a communication that will go to our fifth grade families in Lafayette around this decision and open enrollment. And we did send a communication earlier that, you know, it wasn't a first come, first served. They, they can go back in now before January 5th and change. So if they, if they've been going to Manhattan and they, you know, they have a fifth grader that is now going to, they want to go to Angivine, they'll be able to do that and vice versa. We have committed to continuing that transportation for the students that are currently at Manhattan for the next couple of years. And then we will have to have big discussions with Rob Price and his team around how we, you know, navigate that process if we have kids that continue and whether they need to apply for space available and all those types of things. And that's sort of like our, the very next in the weeds that we have to get with our team and with our partners.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Richard?
So if you look at the Manhattan model versus the Angivine model, you have three content areas at Manhattan versus maybe one content area at Angivine. And if I was a family, you know, if I were, if I had to choose between both of them, I think I'd go to Manhattan.
And it's one content area per year. And so at Manhattan, currently, sixth graders and seventh graders take Social Studies, eighth graders take Science. And so that might be, once we get into the planning phases over at Manhattan, we may want to say, or I'm sorry, at Angivine, we may say, one, at sixth grade we'll do math, at seventh grade we'll do Social Studies, and we'll do Science in eighth grade. A big piece of it is around the planning for that.
Tricky.
So they're not getting, yeah, they're not getting two content areas at the same time, but they do it across the years.
So that was a tricky slide there. Because I understood that they got three content areas in all grade levels.
Right. That, so that's, we, what we currently offer are, what, I don't need to repeat what Kristin just said, but for certain grade levels. And so that, we, because we need to get in the planning with the leaders because they want to, we're talking about what our some adjustments are, this is what we currently have and what we're hoping to add. But yes, it is a little bit tricky.
And similarly to the KC piece around Social Studies and an elective for all. So students in sixth grade don't take Social Studies in Spanish. They take a Language Arts and they take a reading in Spanish and they, and we have one sixth grader currently participating in the dance. So we want an elective for all sixth graders.
Just one last question. I'm going to quit. At Manhattan, you have a number of kids going from Pioneer to Manhattan and then you have a lot of kids going from Uni Hill to Manhattan. I'm not sure what the number is. So the, the, what is the demographics in terms of that? In terms of how many kids from Pioneer and how many kids from Uni Hill go to Manhattan for the bilingual?
So specifically this year, we have two rounds at sixth grade at Manhattan. This is the largest group that Manhattan has had over its number of years of programming. This is the largest. So 25 students jump on a bus at Pioneer, I counted them day one of school, to find out how many there were. 25 students. And they are riding the bus. So there are theoretically about that many also coming from Uni Hill. Now, the piece that we're not taking into consideration are what are our students who are newcomers, so have been, received instruction in their home country in Spanish and have arrived now to Manhattan. They're not necessarily currently participating. So again, that alternative pathway to allow them to join. And students from Creekside or any other Boulder school that would be interested, opening up those pathway, that pathway piece will allow us to be able to continue to maintain Manhattan, we believe.
Okay, anyone else? Can we just take a quick break?
Thank you. Good job. You did a good job.
For tonight's regular board meeting. I'd like to propose at this time, with our board president gone and with the hour being 9:50, that we move all of our information items that are remaining until our next meeting and move on to our action items.
Do you need a motion?
Well, I don't know. I guess I'm making that motion. Would anybody like to second it?
I second it.
Great.
And can the chairman?
Can we do that? Yes.
Do we vote?
So just who made the motion? Lisa made the motion?
I made the motion and Beth seconded.
Okay. Do you have to vote if that voted or no?
Yes, you need to vote.
Okay.
Yes.
Gub Hart. Niznik.
Yes.
Raj Paul.
Yes.
Sargent.
Yes.
Sweeney Moran.
Yes.
Ziss.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Moving then into action items. So we always get this a bit confused. I want to make sure I've got it. If we're going to vote no on something, we would pull the item. If we're going to vote yes but want to have discussion, we don't pull it. We just discuss.
Yes, that's correct. Once the, once you entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, once you make, yes, if
I think I got it. So first, I'm going to read all of these.
You were right.
Yeah, you were right. You're good. So action items, consent grouping, 7.1 personnel items, 7.2 approval of minutes, November 8th, 7.3 approval of minutes, November 15th, 7.4 acceptance of donation, Aspen Creek, 7.5 acceptance of donation, Boulder High, 7.6 acceptance of donation, Centennial Middle, 7.7 acceptance of donation, Mesa Elementary, 7.8 approval of a contract to Deitzler Construction for construction of Emergency Egress Road off Monarch, 7.9 approval of intergovernmental agreement between City of Boulder and BVSD for affordable housing modular factory, 7.10 approval of multi-party collaboration agreement for prevention intervention services, 7.11 certification of Meldivis, 7.12 contract with DJ Matter Limited, 7.13 info managed services and tax services, 7.14 resolution 2231 on participation in family program, 7.15 uninterruptible power supply upgrade, 7.16 grant food services, local food program, 7.17 grant Northwest Network KC Middle empowering action
Network KC Middle empowering action for school improvements from CDE, 7.18 grant Sanchez Elementary School Governor Bright Spot Award, 7.19 grant school security dispersment program, Colorado Division of Homeland Security, 7.20 grant secure student services, RISE Socio Emotional Learning, Boulder County ARPA, 7.21 grant transportation EV charging stations, Colorado Regional Air Quality Council. And now I think I ask if I have, sorry?
Now you ask if there are any board members who want to pull any items?
Does anybody want to pull any items? Okay. And then I get a motion, and then we would discuss anything. Is that correct? Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Second.
Moved by Nicole, seconded by Kitty. Is there any discussion on any items? Okay. I mean, I'll say, nobody?
Well, I'm trying to find the item. Hold on just a sec. 7.9, I'd like to have a little discussion on that, which is the approval of intergovernmental agreement between City of Boulder and BVSD.
Great, Richard, me too. Would you like to start?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to just try to figure out what this factory that everybody's talking about looks like.
I'm sorry, Richard, what was the question?
Could you explain to me what this concept that our community has about a big factory and all the commotion going on in terms of traffic and noise and-
Yeah, sorry to interrupt you on that. The, so I want to ground this a little bit just to talk about what our goals were when we first started having these discussions. So the purpose of this is in alignment with the City of Boulder is to provide affordable housing. And we got engaged because this provides a phenomenal opportunity for students from all over the district to come to our Current Technical Education Center and utilize, if you want to call it a factory, a center. This is a facility that will produce 12 to 14 homes a year. There's been some bigger numbers that have been thrown out there, but we're literally, we're talking about 12 to 14 homes a year. The concern around traffic, this is about an $8 million facility. I want to remind us that we just completed a $26 million addition to our Ed Center and a $16 million culinary center with very, very little disruption. We had some complaints from the neighbors to the south, and that was really around starting construction too early. We were able to address that, minimize those complaints. I do not remember any complaints coming from the Columbine mobile home. We ran majority of traffic up 65th, just like we will with this project. We wrote the IGA language for a reason, is because we do have times when you enter the education center campus that we will not be able to bring truck traffic in during those times. That's when we're bringing students in, et cetera. We have the same barriers when we are constructing the Ed Center in the central kitchen. So do I feel comfortable that we can plan accordingly? Yes. Without using 63rd, we will have minimal traffic on 63rd. I also want to remind everyone, you know, just a few short years ago, we had over 100 buses on this campus. Half of those buses use 63rd, half of those buses use 65th. We also had a fueling station that we have decommissioned. We had sheds, we had a gravel parking lot, we have made significant improvements to this education center. We have been a good neighbor through all of this. We have listened, we have reacted. Just recently, we heard complaints about backup alarms, we've addressed the backup alarms, we've changed our pack, or our dumpster pickup times to later in the day because they were happening around 7:00 in the morning, which was disruptive to the neighbors. So I just want to confirm that we have made significant adjustments to our schedules. I'm confident that we can work through this. We will continue to be a good neighbor, listen and react, but I do feel like we should move forward with this project. It's a benefit to our community, it's a benefit to our students. We've went through all of the city processes. The city, this will next go to City Commission or the City Council on Thursday for final approval, and then it'll go to the state for permitting after that.
Thank you, Rob. And the, my purpose for asking the question is not to say that I'm not going to vote for this to move forward, because I am going to vote to move forward with it.
Any more, Richard? Anybody else? Nicole?
Some of the comments and questions being raised are around Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan, around the good neighbor practices. And can you speak to whether those are commitments the city or the school district has made and where we fall in that?
I'm going to have Glenn Segura, Senior Planner, come up. Glenn has been working closely with the city on this. I'll let him address that.
Yeah, so the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan is a document between the City of Boulder and Boulder County. It's a generalized document that governs local land use regulations. BVSD is not subject to local land use regulations, but we do come into negotiations when it comes to things like the annexation, where we have to agree about how services and things like that are provided.
Anyone else? Okay, I just have a couple. I'm excited about this project. I also hear that we have folks who've been speaking and emailing who are concerned and feel like that they haven't been adequately heard. I was wondering if you could detail for us something about the process that we took and that the city took around community engagement over the past few years.
So, community engagement, we did do a meeting in September, was that the beginning? Beginning of September, where we invited neighbors to come look at the plans, collect input, and we did respond to some of the feedback that we received during that meeting. And we've had ongoing discussions, I think, with neighbors since that time, and several meetings with, at least one meeting with those groups. And also, the, the city has also been doing more outreach as well. They do have a webpage, and we can get that address for you if you want to see it, that has frequently asked questions, some more details about the actual factory and the project itself.
And could you give us some examples of some of the changes we've made in order to address concerns brought up by community members?
Yeah, I can jump on that. Some of the concerns around noise, et cetera, city has hired an acoustical engineer. Acoustical engineer will be doing a study. We have not received that report yet, but we will look at the mitigation measures that are called for, and we'll push on the city to follow those. Again, originally, we were going to have some traffic down 63rd. We've made arrangements to plan accordingly to have that truck traffic down 65th Street. We have made arrangements in the IGA to make sure all the doors are closed, windows are closed during operation, so that we're not having the noises distract neighbors, et cetera. What else? We've lowered the building, so the amount of soil that has to bring, bring in, we will still be bringing soil in, but we've reduced that, if I remember, almost a foot, which significantly reduces the amount of fill that we'll have to bring into the site, therefore reducing truck traffic, et cetera. So, yeah, a number of items that have came up that we continue to react to.
And this is sort of, oh-
Sorry. And also the height limit. We re-did the intergovernmental agreement with, for the annexation with the city over to, to conform to the city height limit for, for built structures.
Just one more question. I think there are reasons why we as BVSD might be excited to host this on our property, but what were some of the reasons that the city wanted to place it here?
Well, I think that we've been looking at a partnership. It's been all around collaboration, around our students and the engagement with CTE. We've been talking about Current Technical Education in this district for quite some time, and we look at this as an opportunity. We thought it was an innovative idea on how to address a number of different needs as we were thinking about our 2022 Critical Needs List. Construction trades played into that. So we were going to have to create space one way or another, and this is a way, you can't think of a better way, to engage students around construction trades. They'll have the opportunity to frame a house, complete all of the plumbing and the electrical and the drywall and everything else. Where else would you get those opportunities than a factory or a center like this?
Thanks. I'm really excited about the impact this can have on Boulder housing, but also, I'm really excited about some of the things we've done before with Habitat for Humanity. I heard some commenters say that it feels like this has maybe limited in scope. I just want to point out that aside from the construction skills, our students have the opportunities to engage in learning math, in learning leadership skills, in learning on-the-job training, and that the other partnership opportunities we've had with Habitat have just been incredibly fruitful and exciting for our schools and our parents. That's all I have. Does anyone else want to comment on this agenda item? Does anyone else want to comment on any other agenda item on our consent agenda? Okay, then I think we're ready for the roll.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gabhart? Niznick?
Yes.
Raj Paul?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Zess?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, action items. We have no items pulled from consent grouping. Policy action consent grouping, item 9.1, adoption of revised board policy EBCE. Do I have a motion to approve this?
Second.
Moved by Kitty, seconded by Richard. Do we have any comments on this policy action? Okay, Laura, I think we're ready for the roll.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gabhart is not present. Niznick?
Yes.
Raj Paul?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Zess?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, moving right along. Future agenda items. I'm a bit reluctant to dig into this too much without Kathy here, but is there anything that anybody wanted to bring up? Richard?
I'd like to see if we can't place the lunch program or the lunch time in our agenda at some point.
I, I second that. I was also thinking that as well.
I thirded. It looks like Kitty forced it, so maybe we can make that happen. What do you think, Rob? Is that something we could, we could do in the next few months? I mean, I feel like there are questions being addressed, and I think many of us as parents have those same questions, and we'd love to have a clear understanding.
I think that as we enter our prioritization meeting, if there's still this type of consensus, then I think that that's something we can make happen.
And when is our next prioritization?
January.
Okay, thanks. Kathleen, do I, remind me what I'm supposed to say here?
Oh, sorry, Nicole, go ahead. It's hard being in the corner late at night in particular. So one of the things I'd like to add to our, for consideration at our prioritization meeting is re-looking at our policies IKF around our graduation requirements. Currently have two policies in the books, one that expired in 2021, one that started in 2022. I would like us to consider offering more of the menu of opportunities as we look at Grad Plus and how we can provide multiple pathways for our students to graduate other than the ones we currently have listed. So IKF policies are something I would like to add for your consideration.
Okay, according to my notes, now I say thank you all. With that, we're adjourned.